Okay. Good evening. We'll call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, to order at 5:30, 2:00 PM. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Haley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Malpackham?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So all seven board members are in attendance here. So before we get the board meeting started, I know that Director Bankus introduced our student up there, and I want to give a quick shout out to Ms. Indy Blanton. So. So Indy is a senior at Palmer, and she is going to pursue her music education at University of New Mexico after graduation at the end of May. So, and you saw her perform as we entered the administration building, and she performed a couple of notes out here. Just amazing, the talent that we have in our schools, and the music and the art and the visual performing arts, all of those, it's amazing to see them blossom and grow and now go and share those talents that they have with other people in the world. So thank you, Indy. Do you want to say a couple of words?
Go for it.
Go for it. This is the time. Just introduce yourself and.
Tell them why you love music.
Yeah, why you love music, yeah.
So I'm a senior. I'm graduating this year, and I've always been interested in music. My dad's also a musician. He's in a ton of like local bands, and our family's always been super involved within local music scenes. And when I got to Palmer, I, like everyone, had a rough time during COVID. And when I came back, my director there, Kalen Ward, gave me a really safe community and helped me connect with a lot of people in a way that I had a hard time with before. And I want to pursue music education and be a music educator to help give other students who might not have necessarily a safe space, a place to feel a sense of belonging.
You have anything more to add? Okay. Thank you.
Indy has already accomplished herself as a music educator, because I said she did a great job on the clarinet, and she let me know it was a soprano saxophone. Ding. I got one wrong, and now I got one right. Thank you.
You and I made the same error. I thought it was a clarinet, too, when I was talking with her, and she corrected me out there. So after you get your degree from the University of New Mexico, hopefully you will come back to District 11 and make a difference in those students' lives, young students' lives. So congratulations and best wishes for you as you graduate and go forth. Yeah, thank you. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Director Haley, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Are we having another director move to amend the agenda? Is that what we are doing at this time? Okay. So we do have an item in non-action agenda item that we would like to move to action. That's the proposal, so we can take timely action on this. Director Jorgensen, can you make the motion to amend the agenda that as presented to move non-action agenda item E5, the GT academic master plan updates and program relocation to the action agenda?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda as presented by moving non-action item E5, GT academic master plan updates, and program relocations to the action agenda.
Second.
Okay. So we have two motions on the floor, so that's why I'm considering it, pondering it at this moment. Okay. Okay. So this motion requires a two-thirds majority for the motion to pass, because we are moving an action item, non-action item to action item. So with that in mind, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion to move the agenda item GT master plan update and program relocation from non-action to action has been approved by the board.
The amendment was approved. Now you need to vote on the actual main motion.
Actual main motion. Okay. With the revision that has taken place. Okay. Okay. So we will now return to the main motion as amended and adopt the agenda as amended. So with the GT master plan updates, that's being moved from non-action to action. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The agenda has been adopted with the revisions.
Point of information, it'll be the action agenda item D4.
Okay. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance. The Rudy students are going to be leading us in the pledge of allegiance, so can we have the four Rudy students right up here? And the flag is, yeah, come right up here. Thank you, guys. That was awesome. So in the spotlight today, we have social, emotional, cognitive learning programs. Superintendent Gaul, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah, I'm excited to bring Dr. Jennifer Schulte to the podium to introduce our social, emotional, cognitive learning program. This is a spotlight. We have much, 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 much more to talk about, but what we want to do is bring what we call practice in action, and Rudy Elementary School will be the ones that will really dig into it. But Jennifer, over to you.
So good evening, Superintendent Gaul, President Malpackham, and members of the board. It's so wonderful to see all of you this evening. I know that I had the opportunity to see some of you at the future-ready ribbon cutting, and that was really exciting. And as you all know, we have so many fantastic things happening within District 11, and it's exciting to be able to spotlight all of the wonderful things. So I'm excited to be here this evening specifically to spotlight the great work happening at Rudy Elementary for their intentional and consistent implementation of Random Acts of Kindness, also known as RAC, Kindness in the Classroom, and the Capturing Kids' Hearts framework. In District 11, we have a whole-child focus, including social, emotional, and cognitive learning. I would like to quickly highlight the outcome data and get to the stories from the students, the parent, and Assistant Principal Molina about how this programming impacts the students, parents, and staff at Rudy. So you can see on the slide, Rudy achieves remarkable growth in students' sense of belonging, soaring from 60% to 69%. Their goal is to increase it even more, and I know that Assistant Principal Molina will be talking in greater detail about that. The 5E results have maintained in the well-organized-for-improvement area for the past five years. Rudy posted some of the top growth in the district with median growth percentile scores of 66 in ELA, English Language, and 58 in Mathematics. They surged 16% in math and 13% in English Language. And I would like to applaud Rudy for that. So before I turn it over to the students, the parent, and Assistant Principal Molina, I would like to highlight RAC Week is happening, February 12th through the 16th. Last year, I know I saw Director Bankus and I believe President Malpackham at Madison Elementary for their RAC Week. All of our elementary schools will be doing activities, so you'll be able to see things in action. So I encourage you to attend if your schedules allow. In addition, there will be a mental health night at Rudy Elementary on Friday, February 16th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And so now, I would like to turn it over to Beckett and Taylor to discuss the impact of Random Acts of Kindness, Kindness in the Classroom, and Capturing Kids' Hearts.
Hello, my name is Taylor McNeil, and I'm in Ms. Davis's fourth-grade class. Because we use Random Acts of Kindness in our classroom, we show each other respect, kindness, and we encourage each other. Some ways, we show encouragement is by writing kudos notes to each other. Our teacher also gives kudos notes. We can also earn positive referrals for our behavior and hard work. We also try to use a growth mindset.
Hi, my name is Beckett Kleiber, and I'm in Ms. Davis's fourth-grade class. One of the things that we do at our school that is CKH is making a social contract. Our social contract is created at the beginning of the year by us. It is our focus and rules of the year. We do good things daily in our classroom and sometimes over the intercom. We are greeted by our teacher every morning and our class affirmer after lunch. We have a social contract daily focus. We have a launch every day where we encourage each other with affirmations. CKH makes our classroom and school a positive learning environment.
And now I would like to invite Ms. Leek up to the podium to discuss the impact from a parent perspective.
Hello, friends. I have three kids at Rudy. I have a fourth at Jenkins, so we are well-versed in Capturing Kids' Hearts and Random Acts of Kindness. A couple of the stories I was going to share, the kids also shared, because my kids have had Mrs. Davis before, and the kudos that they do. They also get to share, there's usually four to a table, so once a week at least, one kid from each table gets to share like a positive thing, and so they all get to kind of clap for each other and encourage each other and cheer for each other, it's like wins, and it just more communal, where you're like, oh, so-and-so got this done, or they're going on this cool trip, and you get to know people, and usually when you know people, it's hard to dislike them as much. And so they feel more empathy, and so like my fourth grader, that's in Mrs. Davis's class currently, has more empathy when someone is having a bad day. He'll literally say, well, maybe they're having a bad day, instead of like, well, they were really rude to me. Kind of just a positive spin. And my daughter, who is in third grade, she struggles, and she likes to give up, and her teacher is very positive with her, and they do the send-off each afternoon with the Capturing Kids' Hearts, where they say something positive, or they even share a joke, which a lot of times I hear, like a lot of knock-knock jokes or fun jokes. But she also says, when she is struggling, like with math or something else, and she'll bring up that she is persevering, and that she's going to get it, and that she didn't get it this time, but that next test, and that thing, and I was like, did you just say persevering? So like, that actually came from you. She's like, well, I'm just going to persevere, and I'm going to get it. And I was like, oh, okay. She's eight. She's very sassy. And so I was like, I like that. So just as a parent, it has bled over into my kids having a more positive attitude with homework and classmates who might, they may not like as much, and just more of a positive experience and a more positive attitude, which helps because they have siblings. And that action also bleeds into home and how they deal with their siblings. We are very pleased with it.
Thank you. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Assistant Principal Molina up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Chad Molina. I wanted to talk first off about the sense of belonging and how we made a commitment to that at the beginning of this year. Our two main priorities as we entered this year were that we wanted every single teacher that entered our building to love coming to work every day. And that's an easy thing to say. You can put it on a poster, you can put it on a billboard, but it is a hard thing to make true. And that is what we are committed to, and we still have work to do, but we will continue. And the second thing we wanted was that every student that entered our building would love coming to school every day. And so those are the things that drove our decisions and to look at CKH and say, we've done it in the past, but have we done it well? And so we took a stance and said, let's make sure we're doing these things well. What we've seen in terms of the impact of this is, last year, at this exact time of the year, we had 120 behavior incidents. That means students being escalated, sent to the office, and having to be dealt with out of, they're out of class, they're missing classroom time, leading to suspensions, that type of thing. So 54 students and 120 incidents. That spoke to a culture issue, because that's a lot of students. We currently have 19 students with 40 incidents. Last year at this time, we had 75 incidents that had happened in the classroom, disturbing instruction. We currently have 18 incidents that have happened in the classroom, disturbing instruction. And so those things have led to increased enrollment, lower withdrawals, and a greater sense of belonging for our staff and our students. Thank you.
So Superintendent Gaul, a question for you. Would you like to open it up for questions right now, or would you like to proceed with our spotlight for the Family, School, Community Partnership?
Let's bring the Family, School, Community Partnership up, because it is an extension of.
Yes.
what happens at Rudy, and I don't want people to think of them in different aspects or in silos.
Great. Perfect. So if I may invite Dr. Wise, Paula Hergert, is Gina here? And Gina, Gina Schmidt.
Good evening. I'm going to be very quick, and then I'm going to pass it to our community partners. There we go. We often do every month a Family, School, Community Partnership Spotlight on a school. Tonight, we're changing that up a little bit to spotlight one of the initiatives we're doing, and it is something I am tremendously proud of, because it is the true heart of a Family, School, Community Partnership from all aspects, being put to work to serve the needs and the programs at a school. I just want to say a first special shout out to Stephanie Atencio and her team at Columbia. You're about to hear that they have opened their doors widely to the community and have trusted us and our team, that the community not only is willing, but can make a difference in schools, and so we're very appreciative to them. What Dr. Schulte was just presenting, oftentimes, as you all know, in schools, a school staff, a school building, a school's resources is only capable of so much, and we have a lot of students who are going to have needs outside of what we can offer district-wide, even with time. And so this partnership is harnessing the power of our community to further this work in a way that supports our students to succeed. And so with that, I'm going to pass it off to two partners, Gina Schmidt at COS I Love You and Paula Hergert at El Paso County Public Health, to tell you what they're doing.
Well, thank you. We appreciate just being able to be here and to be in the room. So yeah, I'm on the team at Cause I Love You, COS I Love You. Some people are like, how do you say that? What does that even mean? However you want to awkwardly say, you love me, that's great. That's great. So on the team at Cause I Love You, and we do a handful of different things throughout the city. One you may have heard of is City Serve Day, which is gathering volunteers around schools and nonprofits and organizations all throughout the city. This past year, we had over 4,000 volunteers on two different dates at over 200 locations. So that's something that we have done historically throughout the city. Also, with this project, it's how do we get community partners in the room? How do we get different people who might not always show up to the same place to work together? And so when Columbia raised their hand and said, hey, we would love to have some folks come to our school, and so we said, okay, how do we help you get those people in the room? So there, it's a lot of different kinds of people, so it's not just one kind of people, because we bring different and diverse strengths. So there are five different churches, five different faith partners walking alongside this project. There are neighbors from just down the road. There are nonprofits and other organizations, Kids on Bikes, Salvation Army, a wide variety of different partners supporting the needs at Columbia. So how can we, as community members who care, and that's where we land, like how can we be your greatest advocates? And I will tell you, I'm one of your greatest fans, and I shout your praises all throughout the city, and that's one of my main roles and huge delights. So we get people to the same room to care about these students, so then how can we, as a community, allow teachers and educators to do their job more effectively? Because community partners come in and walk alongside students and can reach a larger number of students, so that again, those educators can speak to the needs that are really unique to specific students. So we're just glad to be conveners, gatherers, and again, your greatest advocates, so thank you for what you do.
I just have to say, these folks are hard to follow. I was like, wow, amazing. My name is Paula Hergert. I'm from El Paso County Public Health in the Maternal Child Health Division. And El Paso County Public Health has a lot of unique services that we can provide to community partners that a lot of times, schools are not aware of. And we know El Paso County Public Health, their main vision is that we have a thriving community where all people in our community can reach optimal health. Then my role at El Paso County Public Health is to focus more on children and youth in our community, what we can do to promote safety, healing, nurturing relationships. And because of that goal that we have, about three and a half years ago, I met Dr. Jennifer Schulte, and she was going on a journey. You're going to see a really long word up there or title. It's called the Neurosequential Model in Education. And she asked myself and El Paso County Public Health if we would join this journey with her. Since then, and I'm going to put a really nice little push, El Paso County Public Health has invested a large sum of not only human.
Capital.
Yeah, that's a word I'm looking for. It's called the arousal continuum. Human capital, but also financial capital. They've allowed me to spend 35 to 40% of my full-time 40-hour week with District 11.
With no funds exchanged.
No funds exchanged. A lot of laughter.
Yes.
But no funds, because they strongly believe that a thriving community must have thriving schools. And so Jennifer and I are helping Columbia and our team with doing some instruction and training, what's called the Neurosequential Model in Education. Real quick, it is a, it's not a program or curriculum. It is a framework for educators and all school staff that is biologically sound and relationally rich. And what we mean by biologically sound is we need to understand how the brain develops, grows, and changes. We also need to know how the stress and adversity, and sometimes trauma, impacts that developing brain, and it is coming out in behaviors in our classroom. So we are working with Columbia's staff to help them understand the neurobiology of the brain, but we also understand when a lot of children are hurt in relationship, it is relationship that helps them heal. So we are walking alongside them to, so they understand these concepts, and then also provide strategies that match the brain, and that's what we mean by neurobiology and biologically sound. So did I miss anything, Jennifer, on our, right? So a nice shout out to El Paso County Public Health. They do care about you deeply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing real quick that she's not bragging on? On Friday, on Friday, she trained 23 volunteers to help at Columbia, to be classroom aides, and that is a testament to Paula and to Dr. Schulte and to Gina, because Gina's organization was the force that got all of those people there. And so that's a tremendous volunteer turnout for one school, and we're really excited to see how it can grow. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, no, you don't get to leave so quick. Stephanie, can you and Julie come forward to help field some questions from the board as the two principals represent? Sorry, I didn't tell either of you I was going to do that.
Oh, is it group hug?
Questions to the board.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the students to come up and talk to, and thank you for sharing about that social, emotional programs that you have in Capturing Kids' Hearts and the difference that it makes in the discipline referrals that has come up to you. Board, do you have any comments or questions on this subject matter? Director Nelson?
Hello. I was just wondering if you could speak to across the school district and all of our elementary schools, the range. I know not all of the schools have both programs. Do you have a percentage of how many of Capturing Kids' Hearts, how many of Random Acts of Kindness? They all have something, correct?
I do. Absolutely, and I'm happy to share that information, because this is yet again, more of the great work that we have going across our entire district. So we have all 33 of our elementary schools that are implementing Random Acts of Kindness, Kindness in the Classroom. That is the universal social, emotional, cognitive learning that we are intentionally and consistently implementing within our elementary schools. And as we know, there is no one curriculum that meets the needs for all of our students, and so there are supplemental pieces that do get brought into our classrooms. CKH, Capturing Kids' Hearts, is one of those supplemental frameworks that gets brought into the classroom. And of the schools that have been trained in Capturing Kids' Hearts over the years, which started in 2015, we started with 27 schools at all levels, and since that time, not all schools are implementing it with intentionality or consistency, but we do have several schools that are doing it with fidelity and are often recognized as national showcase schools. And that National Showcase School Award is awarded annually. So each year, they have to go through a very lengthy process to be identified as a national showcase school by the flipping group.
For which program was that?
Capturing Kids' Hearts.
And that one has, if I remember correctly, Columbia, you're using. And that one has, if I remember correctly, Columbia, you're using some of your Title I dollars to help fund that program? Is that correct? So the district offers the funding for Random Acts of Kindness, but if schools want that additional program, Capturing Kids' Hearts, then they have to kind of find it in their own budget? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, and so we've made a commitment to the schools that continue to implement Capturing Kids' Hearts that as long as title funding is available, we will do the training for new certified staff. And then in addition to that, Random Acts of Kindness does not cost us a thing. Woo, I love hearing that! Yes, and anybody can log on to www.randomaxeofkindness, create your own account. It has the lessons for schools. It also has a home component, and it also has a work component. So it's not only just our students that are benefiting from this. It's also all of our adults within our system.
We need it too.
Yes, exactly.
Can you speak a little bit to like, how much of the day is revolving around this portion of the programs that we offer? Does that make sense, the time?
Oh, it totally makes sense. So each lesson is about 20 to 30 minutes. Ideally, we want this information integrated into our entire school day. So we don't want it to be viewed as this is social emotional cognitive learning time, right? We want it to be integrated into everything that we do throughout our school day.
Great, that's all I have. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Dr. Rod.
Thank you. I was fortunate to go to coffee with the principal with Principal Fahy and Principal Molina. And the parents that were there had great things to say about the school, and they reviewed a survey looking at data even during the coffee. And it's no surprise that your scores have done what they have. And I'm glad, while I was there, I don't think we really covered these social emotional programs. So I'm glad to learn more about them tonight and congratulations on all the progress. Thank you. And to Columbia, I will have to come and see what's going on over there.
Next Friday, you can come have coffee with us.
I'll see what I can do.
8:00 AM, 8:45 in the library. Coffee bagels and scones.
And scones, wow, fancy.
You just upped the game, Stephanie.
Challenge accepted.
Dr. Wilkinson, I saw your button push. Do you still have anything to comment? Okay.
It's maybe more of a question. This is, sounds like it's more tailored to elementary schools and it's, you know, in all of our schools at some varying level of implementation. What are we doing to, you know, help with the middle schools and high schools? Is there, that's more my question of, is there something you want to come back another night? This is more of a spotlight on, you know, these programs.
Yes, please.
We're going to come back.
Okay.
We'll come back. Go ahead, Jennifer, just give a touch.
Yes, and thank you for that question because we know it doesn't stop at elementary, right? It is lifelong for all of us. We were all once littles learning these skills, and it continues on through adulthood. So yes, we utilize second step for middle school and restorative practices for high school. And again, to your point, our schools are at varying levels of implementation, but ultimately, all of our schools will be intentionally and consistently having this programming within their buildings. And I would be more than happy to come back and spotlight middle schools and high schools as well.
So we'll come back in March as a secondary spotlight on the secondary levels of our social emotional cognitive learning.
Okay, seeing no further comments. So the feedback that we as a board received about this program is that this is beneficial for students in improving their sense of belonging in schools and reducing student behavior in the classroom. And that contributes to the reduction in the discipline rate and the referral rate that Mr. Molina talked about. And that's something that we have observed through data at all the various schools that you were talking about, that this is helpful in reducing that behavior issues that we see in classrooms.
Yes.
Okay. And reduce even bullying and things of that nature where students are not resorting to those, where they hurt each other because of positive, the way that they communicate with each other.
Absolutely. And this goes back to the passage of the NLO in 2017. And so our schools were brought on board at varying levels because as we know, the MLO dollars were not given all at once. And so we brought our schools on in a cohort approach. And so our schools are at varying levels of implementation, but ultimately, they will all be doing this with intentionality and consistency.
Random Act of Kindness is in every single elementary school.
Yes.
Capturing Kids' Hearts in selective schools.
Correct.
That would, in addition to Random Act of Kindness, wants a supplemental program.
Correct.
And Ms., the Rudy Elementary, do they use title dollars to fund? Because you're not a title school. How do you fund your Capturing Kids' Heart program?
Well, they help us with the new training. But when it comes to if we need, want coaching and that kind of things, it comes out of our budget. We have to plan for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that information. And it's good to know the emphasis from the board level is that we want the highest quality instruction in every single classroom. And that's not going to happen when we have all the behavior issues that sometimes come and interrupt the teacher's time. And sometimes a teacher has to spend 80 or 90% of their time dealing with one or two children that are interrupting the classroom instruction. Hopefully, these, the intention of these programs is to ensure that that highest quality instruction happens in every single classroom. And so our students can benefit from that. And that contributes to the increase in the mid-year data that we saw. Okay, thank you.
And if I may also add, related to multi-tiered system of supports, we really do focus on the needs of all of our students. So we are starting at that universal level. And students that need some additional support, maybe at the tier-two level, and the students that are exhibiting significant behaviors at that tier-three level, we are very intentional about getting the interventions in place and progress monitoring those interventions and adjusting. When things are not working, we're tweaking it. And we're constantly trying to make it a more successful school environment for all.
We want every child to be welcomed and inclusive in our schools.
Yes.
And every child to be known by a trusted adult. That's something that we talk about, that every child is accepted for who they are. So thank you for being here and presenting. And we look forward to the secondary school presentation at a future point.
Thank you.
Moving on, it's the superintendent's report. And superintendent report, looks like Superintendent Gall has some assistance that's going to come up and join him in his chair.
My name is, my name is Dominic Trahero, and I'm in Ms. Leger's second grade class. I would like to give a shout out for Ms. Leger for all of the wonderful things she has done. Like, help us with math, and I love when she does science. I enjoy my time in Ms. Leger's class. Thank you, Ms. Leger.
We'll give Ms. Leger a chocolate.
My name is Jaden, and I'm from Ms. Gossage's class. And Ms. Gossage is the best teacher, and here are the reasons why. First off, she cares about us, and she is always thinking about us and getting us prizes when we accomplish something. Also, she makes school easier by adding our drafts and breaking down math problems. Ms. Gossage also makes school fun on Fridays with fun activities. I also enjoy how quiet her classroom is. Most of all, I like how funny she is. These are the reasons why Ms. Gossage is the best teacher.
Thank you to Ms. Leger and Ms. Gossage.
Okay, always so much fun to have our students present in our boardroom. First, from the prelude this evening by our musical genius at Palmer, and then to have the incredible articulate clarity of how our students from Rudy today not just led the Pledge of Allegiance. I mean, you know, particularly for us vets out there, when you hear that tiny little voice be the one that leads the entirety of a room into the Pledge of Allegiance, it just, you know, for me, that really resonates. But to hear them talk about their programs in their schools that our Board of Education, our community, our staff implement every day on behalf of their future, for them to get it and throw it back to us and say, this is working, and this is helping me be better at the thing that I'm here to do, just should really ground all of us. And then if you're ever in doubt of anything, just a teacher shout out from a student from the dais, just, it just works every time. And so I just so appreciate the way, the way kids can make teachers cry like that. Great, it's awesome. Thank you all for that. I just want to recap a little bit last week. You know, I know, I know not everybody spends all their Wednesday evenings watching work sessions and board meetings.
They don't?
Well, some of us do, and we really enjoy it. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity, President Malta. We highlighted here just one school per region on our mid-year growth. And this is reflective of incredible growth that we saw across the district. 5% for ELA on average and 5% for math as well, which has us well on track to being able to achieve our board and our district goals. But what I really want to highlight here is the variability that you see in different school types and locations and that sometimes people will use growth to their advantage, depending upon the argument that they want to make. Growth is an integral part of achievement, even for students that are already achieving. And so using growth particularly as mid-year is a wonderful way for us to say, are the strategies working and how do we continually improve? Way too much detail, but the briefing that we gave to our school leaders just yesterday morning was called our Continuous Improvement Cycle Briefing. Because even though we are satisfied with the numbers that we see here, it is a constant desire to improve. And so I want to first of all, give hats off. I'll start all the way down to the students who spent the extra time to invest in their learning and to be able to navigate interim assessments and then to block module tests and all those things for these numbers to exist. I want to thank our teachers in the classroom first and foremost for believing in the strategies that the district is investing in, for them to take an already highly skilled profession to this next level. It will take tremendous amounts of efforts across the district for us to turn strong growth into more than acceptable achievement. We are greatly appreciative of those efforts. To the school leaders who've allowed us, again, to bring in some new strategies and for them to help influence them. And then particularly to our central office staff who has literally just flipped the way they think about it. It's not about what central office says, it's about what schools need. And if you attend some of our professional development that we're doing at both the teacher, the coaching, and the principal level, you'll see a very dynamic, a very collaborative environment where we are facilitating and not telling. And so this is tremendous work by everyone. My own personal shout out, I really want to give a huge shout out to Twain because it's just a few weeks ago that we're sitting here and people are sweating bullets on some of the things that we saw from last year's numbers at Twain. And so for Felicia and her staff to really commit to the strategies and take the extra resources and turn them into this amount of growth is certainly worth a superintendent shout out. Second shout out, I really appreciate the slide. I asked the team to have fun with this, and they did. We, every time they tell me that it's getting warmer, it feels like it gets colder. But we had, certainly had a really cold spell last week over the three-day weekend. And what you find out is sometimes it's not the cold that closes the school, it's the warming that comes after it. And so a great science lesson for anybody out there is it's not when the pipe bursts that's the issue. It's after the cold spell that you find out that the pipe burst. And so each day that we thought the forecast was getting better, as we were really pushing to want to be at school on the day after MLK holiday on that Tuesday, we just started stacking up more and more schools that were not ready because the warmer it got, the more bursts that we had in our pipes. And so I'm going to try and read all the names here. I have them in, Alanda Mattson, Angelo Martinez, Brian Kelly, Chris Woodworth, Craig Johnson, Curtis Montana, Daniel Furbush, Gary DeBlasio, Jean Perez, John Dunin, John Myers, John Shute, Jordan Evans, Kennedy Gilroy, Larry Sanchez, Mark Miller, Mike Bowler, Mike Willis, Miles Anunzia, Pete Acuno, Santiago Rodriguez, Tim Hendren, Vincent Reed, and Wyec Sedlik. And there are probably another dozen more. But these individuals gave up their time over the weekend, gave up their evenings to get our schools ready to be open. And when we were open again on Wednesday morning, no lost instructional space, no lost instructional time. And so when you hear us talk about access to highest quality instruction, this is an extension of that. This is how your facilities team creates the space for highest quality instruction to occur. And so I really thank them for the time. And Chief Odom gets a huge shout out for the number of texts and phone calls to be accomplished on one three-day weekend. So to our ESP shout outs for Wednesdays, to Julie, our administrative assistant over for CTE. She actually activates our CTE programs. You could just imagine the number of rules and regulations that she has to navigate. To Anna Olson over as a leave specialist. She handles the challenges of life for our employees with incredible grace, just having to have done that this last week for a senior member of our team. To Brenda Cortez, Office Admin Assistant and Risk Management. Has an incredible work ethic, just won't leave until the job gets done. And to Tom McNabb on our Landscape Crew over at FOTC. Outworks staff half his age. And so I really like that one particularly as I am accepting the fact that I am actually in my 50s. Anybody that is still measuring themselves against the physical effort of the 20-something-year-old is deserving of a shout out. To our Teacher Tuesdays, we want to call out Bart Mann over at Penrose. Creating a caring, supportive environment while still asking for high expectations. He's the kind of teacher that students come back and visit at Penrose. And we all know there's that one teacher each one of us wants to go back and see when we find future success. To Pam Berg at Freedom for bringing participation for all of her students into the classroom, just actively making sure that the kid that doesn't raise their hand finds a way to get their voice into that space. Oops, I went backwards there. To Sarah Suarez also at Freedom for creating a fantastic morning meeting that sets and starts the day for all her students. And to our coach Dwight Hale, our football coach for Sparta up there at Doherty. Just embracing lifelong fitness for his students. It's not just about how they perform in class, and it's not how they perform on the field. It's whether or not they're adopting a healthy lifestyle for the rest of their lives. So that's it for the superintendent's report, and I yield the remainder of my time to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for being here too. Any comments on the superintendent's reports? Okay, I just want to quickly add, the mid-year data that was presented to the board last week at the work session, and Superintendent Gall went over it in his first slide. That's highly gratifying to know our students are growing and achieving. Our students coming out of the pandemic were so far behind, and now to see the incredible growth that is happening. Now, you know, we can say, hey, that's because of some new strategy that this board put into place. And I can, you know, we can take credit for it. It's far from it. It's the magic happens in the classrooms. It's the teachers that are making the, taking advantage of the resources that we are putting as close to the students in the classrooms. That's what we want to invest our dollars as close to the students in the classroom, but it's the magic happens in the classroom. So thank you for all the staff that's making a difference and seeing that remarkable growth that Superintendent Gall called, pointed out to. Twain was one of the schools that was identified as a state, by the state, as a priority improvement, turnaround school. I think it was a turnaround school. But now seeing that incredible growth in the mid-year data. And I also want to point out, two other schools out there, Audubon and Mann Middle School, they are showing incredible growth too. Those were priority improvement schools too. So it's really gratifying to see that the focus that we want to improve student growth and student achievement is paying dividends. and student achievement is paying dividends by the data results that we see. So, moving on to the next item, it's public comments. There are, I think, several public comments today, and I will wait for Ms. Olson to hand me those comment lists. But in the interest of making this process as orderly and efficient as possible, I just want to go over some of the board protocol for you to follow. First and foremost, board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. As a board, we are highly interested in listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our work. The clear expectation is that this feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to disparaging or defamatory remarks or obscene comments. You will have three minutes to deliver your remarks, please monitor the clock that is on display, and complete your comments in that allotted time. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking, or use silent applause, please refrain from clapping. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, Ms. Olson. Please go in order, Ms. Olson. Okay, sounds good. And we don't have any students making comments? Okay, the first comment that I have is from Mr. Michael Anderson. Mr. Michael Anderson. Thank you, sir.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I appreciate the time. I'm a veteran on the parent's side of the Gifted Magnet Program in District 11. All four of our children went through the program. Our first child to go there, our daughter, went to Stratton Elementary in the fourth grade, that's when they started, they used to call it the Sale Program. And then she went on to Irving Middle School, where it was then hosted, and then on to Dougherty High School. And at Dougherty, she found other rigorous coursework that she could do, including four years of Latin with Dr. Schott. She, you might be able to tell by looking at me, or might be able to guess, but she wasn't on the volleyball team or the basketball team, but she was on a team, she was on the mock trial team at Dougherty. Later on, of course, she went to college, she graduated, and then she determined to go to law school. She was able to get a full scholarship, academic scholarship to a T-40 law school. At that particular law school, they have a competition annually for all the law students in all three years, about 400 students there, an annual writing competition. And she became the first student there ever to win the competition as a first year. And then she repeated it by becoming the first student ever to win it twice. She's a product of District 11, the GMP Program Sale, and Dougherty High School. And I'm very grateful that we have this program. Fast forward a few years, her son, living out of state, was not having his needs met as a gifted student, and he has since moved in with us, grandparents, so that he could attend the GMP offering at Saban. We were empty nesters for 10 years, so we're sort of getting used to the whole thing again. It's going well. My reason for saying all this is because I feel that GMP was a tremendous opportunity for our kids. You know, our daughter and our other kids, they were blessed with raw potential, but through GMP, they learned to turn that potential into abilities. And it really, for her and for our other kids, it really launched them on their path to success. And I'm just very, very grateful. I'm hoping for the same for our grandson. With that in mind, what I want to just point out is that wherever the program needs to go, if it needs to move in order to attract more students, that's, I'm for that, I hope for that. I want as many students as possible to have that opportunity. Right now, I know that our numbers were not at capacity in the Gifted Magnet Program, and I think that's a shame. I hope there are way more gifted students in the district than there are attending those GMP offerings. So, my hope is that it can move to where it will fill to capacity, and in five years from now, we're having a conversation about expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, let's refrain from clapping, so we can keep this moving along. I have a whole stack of comments here, so we are going to be here for some time, so that's why we just want to keep this moving along.
Hello and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board as a whole this evening. I've had, I have appreciated the opportunity that I've had to speak with some of you already, and for your willingness to listen openly to the concerns of teachers at West Middle School about the moving this program. As someone who sees West growing and has seen some of the struggles in just two years, I understand the need for continual evolution within the district for schools to reach the amazing families we have within our boundaries and to pull some of them back to the district. Perceptions of education are not always sunshine and daisies, they can be pretty negative at times. When I told some of my former colleagues that I had accepted a position as a social studies teacher at West, the look on their faces said it all. How can we expect to change this perception of West when we continuously are getting our legs knocked out from underneath us, as it seems? The perception of moving a program that has continued to grow in the recent years to another school that is already near capacity can make it appear that the district doesn't even believe in the full capabilities of West. As a club sponsor and a coach of multiple sports, I also wonder how my students will fare when they move to a school that has cut students every year from their sports teams because of how many students try out and how many they have in the building. I can't guarantee my two seventh-grade boys who are on the basketball team at West that they would make the basketball team at Holmes, or even the five girls that I coached this past year as on my basketball team, that they would even make it on a team at Holmes. At West, any student who wants to participate in sports has that opportunity to do so because we are so small. Currently, I don't see how I will have a girls' basketball team next year because five of those six were in the Gifted Magnet Program at West. How do you suggest that I tackle this monumental task ahead of me? At the beginning of the year, we were made promises by an administrator who is no longer with us. These promises were on a grand scale, and I was excited. I even worked with him to bring an event to D-11 that saw schools from all over Al Paso County. This event was highlighted on the D-11 Facebook page. It was just one way we were trying to bring back a positive light in the district. I was promised compensation for that, and I have yet to see that. It just feels like the district as a whole has given up on West when we lost an administrator who was big on promises but lacked follow-through. We don't see a lot of follow-through on promises, so I don't know if I can believe the promises that were made to us last night in our meeting. I'm simply asking for more time, allow us to create a meaningful transfer of time for the GMP program, and have West get a leader that is going to help us build this reimagining that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wendy Frommuth. Did I get your last name correctly?
Frommuth, it's good.
Okay.
I knew who you were speaking of. My name is Wendy Frommuth, and I teach the third-grade Gifted Magnet Program at Fremont. I've taught third-grade Gifted Magnet Programs since it was first introduced 11 years ago. I've been at Fremont for the last 14 years. My husband taught the fourth-grade Gifted Magnet Program class at Fremont for 17 years. Our children went to Fremont and went through the Gifted Magnet Program, too. Fremont has been our second home and our second family. I love teaching gifted students. They are challenging and quirky, frustrating and lovable, gifted and talented, and often they are all of these at the same time. The Gifted Magnet Program is an amazing place for these kids to be accepted for who they are and to be challenged in ways they have never been challenged before. My file of letters from students and parents who have loved and appreciated this program takes up a good chunk of the space in one of my desk drawers. We know this program serves an important need in District 11. However, over the last several years, the enrollment in our program has declined. Currently, I have 11 students, and I know the program cannot continue with these numbers. Next year, we risk being reduced from three full-time teachers to one and a half. What parent would opt to put their child into a three, four, or five combo class? As much as I love Fremont, we are at a crossroad. Do we want to lose the program altogether in order to keep it at Fremont? Or do we move the program and give it a chance to thrive? This program is not about a certain school, and this program, this program is about serving a special population of students. We appreciate that the staff and administration at Fremont has supported us and encouraged us as we look forward to keeping the program going. The choice is clear. I would rather move the program than end it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah Clappam. Are you Ms. Sarah Clappam?
I am not Sarah Clappam, but she did give me words to speak on her behalf, if that's a law.
Are you signed up as another speaker as well?
I am.
Okay, then we will defer to that point in time, just so that we can get every speaker. If it is necessary at the end of it, I will get you back in. But Ms. Sarah Clappam was the one that signed up, and she's not here, so she can share her information and message with the board through email, okay? Thank you. Ms. Julie Anderson.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. As one of the few handful of teachers whose classes would be moved to another whole school from Fremont to Freedom, I want to add my voice to the discussion proposing the relocation of the Gifted Magnet Program. I've come before the board exactly two times, tonight, obviously, and back in the 1900s, when I proposed to expand it to Fremont in the first place. As my husband has explained, District 11 has made a big, positive inter, multi-generational impact on our family. We will forever be grateful for the education experiences our children had and have had and will continue to have because of District 11's commitment to gifted students. Professionally, I've worked at Fremont since 2005. I've spent all but the last year and a half in non-GMP classrooms. Before that, I was heavily involved as a parent volunteer and a substitute teacher. Fremont has been part of our family for countless performances and presentations, my son's Eagle Project, six marriages, three deaths, 13 surgeries, multiple celebrations, challenges, and so much professional growth. The staff there has always been compassionate, professional, courteous, they're examples of perseverance, grit, and love. Fremont is in my blood. My car drives with autopilot to get there. Even with all that history, I'd like to add my voice in favor of moving the program to Freedom. Although it's challenging for me personally, I believe the move will help increase recruitment, allow our GMP classes to reach capacity, and establish a roadmap for future expansion. The time has come for me to lay aside what's most comfortable for me and move toward what will allow this fabulous program to impact as many students as possible with the gifted education that they need and deserve. I thank you for the positive impact that you've had on my own family, on the students that I currently teach, and the future students that District 11 will have that need this valuable resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mackenzie Morrow.
Hello. My name is Mackenzie Morrow, and I teach fifth grade in the self-contained Gifted Program at Fremont Elementary. After working in gifted for several years, I have come to learn that gifted has many misconceptions surrounding it, some of those being that it's an elitist program or only for students of high socioeconomics. But that is far from the truth. Gifted education is a service we provide to students because they are identified as gifted and deserve to have their needs met, just like any other students in specialized programs or students with IEPs or 504 plans. Just like those programs, we see all types of students, rich, poor, ELL, and all ethnicities. Many of these students struggle to fit in because they are quirky, can be somewhat demanding at times, and a know-it-all or other characteristics that are associated with gifted. Many people don't understand them, but we do. We love these kids, we know they deserve to learn something new every day. They deserve to feel like they belong, they deserve to explore their interests and do something amazing in life, because they will. Students and parents go searching for these programs to help their child because they have tried countless schools and programs. We are the only district that offers this type of program, and it has proven to be an outstanding fit in education for a select population that is often overlooked. There are so many testimonies of how successful this program is for these kids. Many people in gifted education acknowledge this unique program and encourage others to join. As a teacher, I understand that this program can change lives. D-11 is fortunate to have an advocate like Emily, who constantly is evaluating our services and what we offer in gifted to these students. She wants to make sure this program succeeds and grows, and so do all the other people involved, because it's special. I'm so thrilled what this program could mean for us. It's not going to be an easy transition, and we know that. Like we've heard and seen, Fremont's in our blood, we love Fremont. However, as a gifted team, we have held additional meetings on our own, we have made signs, postcards, social media posts, and personally promoted the program in all the ways we possibly could. Yet, we are still averaging 11 to 16 students in our classroom. What this program needs, we are lacking. The facility's lacking, and unfortunately, this is what we get judged on. If moving the program is approved, it can mean servicing more students and not fearing each year of losing this extraordinary program. This program is bigger than convenience of our own personal lives. We must think beyond who we will upset and focus our thoughts on how many students will finally find a place where they belong with the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brandy Losky.
Hi.
If I pronounced your name wrong, please...
Sure, it's Brandy Losky, thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. I am a D-11 parent and future educator. Both of my kids are gifted and talented, but my son has been in the GMP program since he was in third grade at Stratton Elementary. And I am just here to let you guys know how important, and I might cry, how important this program has been to my son. Gifted, as others have said, it's not about being smart. They have such unique and incredible little minds, and to be surrounded in an environment that provides the kind of support and services that these kiddos need has been life-changing for my son. I feel like I was introduced to him, he was the little boy on the playground that said, "Can we come back when no one else is here?" And now I have a kiddo that's on the basketball team, he's a runner, he has friends, he's doing well, he has grown and thrived and flourished as a human and as a student through the GMP program. And he wouldn't have gotten this type of academic journey, I suppose, if not for this program. I'm not here to tell anybody what they should do, I don't feel like I'm in that kind of position, but I do know that there are so many Gunner Loskys in this district that could really excel in just being a student and being a human in this program. And if moving it means that more little boys and little girls get to have these services provided to them, then I think that that is amazing, and that is what should be done. Because I know for me, as a parent, I love District 11, I don't want my kids to go anywhere else, I want to work in this district, and I want my kids, and I want all kids to have the kind of services that the GMP program provides and understands. I guess that's my biggest thing, is to be around educators that understand. And I'm so sorry, this is a hard situation for everybody, I don't want these services to be taken away, but if it could be given to more students, then I think that that is important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony Kennedy. Well, thank you, welcome back. I didn't mean to cut you off when you came initially, but we try to restrict comments to one person and three minutes at a time when we have a particularly significant number of comments out here because of time restrictions. So, go ahead.
Can I actually ask a quick clarifying question, then? If I yielded the remainder of my time to ask the board a question, would you guys be able to answer?
to answer?
We don't respond back to public comments at this time. We are certainly going to have a robust discussion on this move, and we will, you know, you can present your comments, and we will certainly discuss it when it comes up as an action.
Then if possible, at the end, I'd like to start reading some of the words that Ms. Clapham had.
You can. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Members of the board and to the rest of our D11 community, my name is Anthony Kennedy, and I am currently the long-term sub for the non-GMP 7th to 8th grade math classes at West Middle School. Yesterday, we got a chance to speak about the effect this move will have on my non-GMP students, how they feel left behind by their teachers, districts, and now peers. This board has reassured us that there is no plan to close West, and that the remaining students are at the forefront of your thoughts in this decision. As an Army veteran, I believe accountability is paramount in decisions like these. To that end, I'd like to challenge the board with the following question. If you have truly heard the concerns of staff and students, are you willing to add the contingency that prior to the GMP program being moved, there needs to be a truly equitable resource available to the remaining staff and students that will serve those same needs? So at this time, I'd like to start reading for Ms. Clapham, the 6th grade counselor and 2023 Colorado Councilor of the Year. So she says, "I'm angry because year after year, district leadership has promised to reinvent West Middle School, and every year, those promises go unfulfilled. Instead of fulfilling those promises tonight, you are voting to remove roughly 1/3 of our highest achieving students and move them to a different school. The decision to take resources from a school so abruptly will be devastating for our community. Our academic master plan commits to providing equitable core curriculum in all of our D11 schools. This late in the year, we will not be able to recover in time to maintain the quality education that we promised all of our students. The reality is that you are taking our highest achieving students and leaving the rest to limp along until the circumstances are ideal for the presumed reinvention to happen. Board members, if you vote in favor of moving GMP, you'll knowingly decide that there will be a percentage of our students who will not be getting access to a quality neighborhood school next year. Sure, the teachers will still ensure rigor in the classroom and deliver, or develop engaging lessons, but the small amount of students that remain at West won't have access to competitive sports, robust clubs, or enriching art programs. And we know these things are equally as important to the success of a middle school's student, or middle school student's development. Board members, you must decide how dedicated you are to the language of our academic master plan. Even when times are toughs, are you going to fulfill the promise you made to all the families in District 11? My proposal is to slow down this process and give West the opportunity that you've promised for years. Our staff is ready to change. We are willing to get creative with FDE and recruiting, and we are desperate to put in the work. Let us reinvent ourselves and see how GMP can fit into our new vision before we remove it completely." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bridget Rector. Bridget Rector. Bridget Rector. Okay, moving on. Kathryn Brophy. Ms. Kathryn Brophy. And these are about the Thomas McLaren contract, so I don't see anybody here to speak about the Thomas McLaren contract. Just want to make sure. Okay, moving on. Mr. Lyman Kaiser. And I see Ms. Lyman Kaiser.
President Milpackham and board members, I am speaking tonight to urge you to support the proposed relocation of the Gifted Magnet Programs at Fremont and West to Freedom and Homes respectfully. Full disclosure, I have been a strong supporter of high-quality Tier 3 programming for gifted students in D11 since 1990. As you know, I served on the D11 Board of Education from 1994 through 2003. In the late 90s, my board, with me as a key advocate, bucked both the administration and CSEA to vote for funding expansion of the Gifted Magnet Programs from just Stratton to Fremont, and also West Middle School and Irving Middle School, later relocated to Saban. I don't want to see us lose that. The board's number-one priority, student success, the board will refocus on improved academic outcomes for all students by empowering every student to achieve their personal best. That includes our highly gifted students, including gifted ELL, special needs, Title I, and homeless students. And the current GMP curriculum does just that. GMP teachers and parents of GMP students have noted over the years that successful GMP schools must have a GT-friendly principal with a background in gifted and talented education and an academically rigorous, positive environment. Freedom as a Title I school has struggled with finding a positive balance between a Title I focus and a GMP focus. Freedom has not achieved a Student Performance Framework rating above improvement in the past five years, and had a net permits, that's in versus out, of a minus 92 or greater in all of those five years. In essence, many parents do not see Freedom as a positive environment for their gifted student. By comparison, Freedom's SBF rating has been performance all five years with a worst net permits of a minus 13 in a very competitive environment. Middle school, GMP teachers and parents of MSG students have also noted the importance of supplemental electives, for example, enriching choices with STEM, arts, performing arts, robotics, clubs, and so forth. The same situation is true at West as was at Fremont and compared to Homes. I know West is a tough call, but the program simply is not sustainable with current numbers. And the past five years suggest there is no quick fix.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Your time is up. The board received your email too, Mr. Kaiser, and we had an opportunity to take a look at it. Each one of the board members had an opportunity to read your feedback. Thank you. So these are general comments. I think we are done with action and non-action comments.
Hello, board. How are you doing tonight? I just wanted to go ahead and mention a couple of things. First off, the downfall part. I know that everybody here is going to be getting their real estate tax stuff, and I'm about ready to throw up when I get mine. I'm sure everybody is. I kind of noticed as far as for how much money, more money, you guys are going to be getting, and I think if I'm not mistaken, it's about 66 million because of the increase of our houses. And I would just ask that you guys think about maybe lowering the mill levy just a little bit, just to kind of help the people keep the houses so we can keep our kids in this district, okay? So please give that some thought for next year of lowering the mill levy, because you're getting quite a bit more. Second thing I wanted to go ahead and bring up is the sound in this room is terrible. The reverb, when we're sitting out there, back there, you can barely understand what anybody is saying, whether it's from you guys or if it's from up here. Maybe there's a school that has, in high school, that has some kids that are doing sound systems. Have them come in and do a class here and fix the sound, okay? The next thing, the third thing, is I just wanted to go ahead and commend you guys for going ahead and putting in a variety of different types of goals for the students, for the school, and for the district, and hitting those goals. It's so important with, especially with what happened with COVID and how the kids just fell off the deep end with learning, and you guys are really making an effort to go ahead and turn that all around and to help our children get back to, you know, making sure that they have the good grades that they need for their math, their science, their history, their language skills, all of that, which is important for them to go ahead and be successful later on in life. So I just want to go ahead and commend you for all doing that. I know you have hard decisions you have to make, and I know that whatever decisions you make are the right ones based on the situation at hand. And I just want to again, thank you all for that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Flores.
Good evening. My name is Maria Flores, and I have three children in District 11. We have been part of D11 since 2014. I actually have a student at West Middle School. She's in the Gifted program. Had no idea this was going on today, but I support West Middle School. My presence here today is in reference to my 5th grader, who is currently at Stratton Elementary. In November of 2023, he participated in a group project to learn about the American Colonial Era. And from my understanding of the assignment, they were randomly selected to pick a role, kind of like picking a card. So they selected a role, and my son is black, and he selected the slave role. I was not made aware of the incident, of the assignment, until about four weeks later. Very nonchalantly, it was mentioned in an email to me through ClassDojo that the assignment had occurred, this happened, but Demetria, which is his name, did not appear to be affected. That's not what my 5th grader said. He felt that it was racist. He felt uncomfortable, but nobody asked him, which is why I'm here today. I did speak to the principal. He tried to minimize and to not say, he was saying that he was going to take a look at the assignment for next year so that it gets changed. My request today is for it to be removed completely from D11 curriculum. It is harmful. I understand that that wasn't the intent, was to be harmful. What's important is the impact that it made to my child. And I also don't understand the learning in having a child role-play a slave. We certainly, we would find it unconscionable to request a Jewish child to role-play a Holocaust survivor. And so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Simpson-Duggan.
Good evening, Superintendent Gall, Dr. Milpackham, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you as a D11 alumna and faculty retiree. We would most likely agree that words matter, so I'd like to thank you for recognizing educators at open school board meetings. Teaching is difficult work because of the wide-ranging aptitudes and interest levels in a class, psychosocial impacts, and a wide-ranging, unrealistic expectations from different adult populations, from the state all down to the community. Someone stated not long ago that low performance in some schools reflects teachers not doing their jobs effectively. If we look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, safety, psychological and/or physical is required for the brain to make space for learning. Why blame just teachers for something broadly influenced? Sometimes what happens at home or on the way to school or in the halls derails academics, academic performance, and sometimes inopportune on testing day. Someone said a couple of weeks ago that 50% of teachers would quit if they could. The question should be why? Having spent years in public, charter, and private schools, I can tell you that teachers are undervalued, unheard, and/or unappreciated by a multitude of sectors. Messaging is important. You seem to realize that because you approved searching for a firm to disseminate a consistent message to all stakeholders, not just to those who voted for you. After all, the voter turnout was woefully low. The last board, to its credit, and after protracted negotiation, finally agreed to the union's request for a modest 3% raise, which was far below the 8% cost of living. That allowed the district to retain experienced and invaluable teachers, to compete in attracting new ones, and all teachers, union and non-union, benefited. What if we did something revolutionary and the board and union worked together, rather than one being hostile to the other for some subtextual reason? You have a common goal, good education, which advantages not only those working and learning in D11, but also the community at large, because we will see graduates who know how to think, to see patterns, to inquire, to engage in civil discourse in order to understand another's perspective, rather than to be defensive and accusatory. It was quite refreshing last week to hear Director Ott's questions and to have Dr. Bankus encourage further discussion to shed more light on an issue that one person didn't really want to consider. That's an example of what everyone in the D11 community needs illustrated more and more often. We are all on one side, the side of a well-educated student body that will become engaging members of the society.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Pamela Lawson. I'm a former teacher in several places over many years. I would like to share some personal experiences with teachers' unions, which make me not trust them, though they say they are the teacher's friend. When I began teaching, the town near us had an active teachers' union that wanted all the teachers to strike. The school board there specifically told the new hires that if they joined the strike, they would lose their jobs. The union assured them not to worry, that they would fight to retain their jobs. The result? Every new teacher who joined the strike was fired. The union was powerless because of their breach of contract, the teachers. Years later, at a D11 new teacher initiation, the union made a hard sell to join them. This cost hundreds of dollars yearly for me, but they claimed they would help all teachers if there were any legal problems. In one session, a lady who had refrained from joining CSEA asked the representative directly if the union would provide her legal support and resources if, for some reason, parents sued her. He answered that the union had responsibility to their dues-paying members. Could she then really trust the union to fulfill their promise? In the current master agreement between CSEA and District 11, that is from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2025, in Article 2, Section B, which is titled "Fair Representation, Nondiscrimination", it states the following, and I'm quoting this, "The association shall equally represent all teachers under the terms of this agreement without regard to their membership or non-membership, activity or nonactivity in the association or any other teacher organization." Can teachers really trust that they will do this after the representative gave us a question that he might not? Do they really represent all the teachers? In a national election, the word got out that CSEA had given over 90% of their donations to an election without any consent to one political party. How is this representation for all teachers who pay dues? Most people who become teachers in order to help students, children to learn, and yet the union leaders have been known to say they will not represent the children until the children start paying dues. My question continues to be, can we trust that teachers' unions really have the good of the schools as their first priority? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have in the agenda at 7:00 PM, public hearing for Academy ACL and Roseville Charter, Academy Charter Renewal. We do not have any public comments for either of those schools signed up? Okay, so we will return back to a general comments. The next comment is from Mr. Richard Lawson. Mr. Richard Lawson.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and as well as you guys. I had a good speech here, I thought, three minutes to the second, and I think it's not appropriate at this moment. My wife said mostly what I wanted to say, and I just wanted to say, as a parent of three Dordie graduates and grandparent of students now, I and my family appreciate your endeavors to create a good school system for the children who live here. I appreciate the staffs and the teachers. I know, being married to a teacher, how much work it is. Your day doesn't stop when the school bell notifies the students that the day is over. Hours and hours at home, also those involved. I appreciate that. Hours and hours at home, also those involved, I appreciate that. I just wanted to say thank you, and maybe this will be appropriate at a later date. That's all.
Thank you. You can also email your comments to the Board if you so decide. You can email those comments to the Board. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. My name's Rebecca Kelty. I'm a resident of D11, and somewhat of a public figure. And I wanted to bring something to your attention that I have found out during the process of going in and out of El Paso County, going across the state, you know, doing speeches and speaking to people and all that kind of stuff. And it's something I really feel that I needed to bring your attention to. Across, not just El Paso County, D11, El Paso County, but across the state, the D11 Board has somewhat gained a reputation. And the reputation that you guys have is outstanding. You guys are revered across the state. Everywhere I go, and I just wanted you to hear this, because I don't think you hear enough of this, the things that you're doing for the students, for the parents, for the teachers, for the district, you know, across all of D11 is making waves across the entire state of Colorado, not just El Paso County, but everywhere. You've become the role model, you've become the, who everyone wants to be. I met with a gentleman last night, he's from D3, and he just was so excited about D11. He's like, "They're just the best. I just wish we could be just like them." And I really think that says a lot about you guys. You guys, this is on your own time, on your own dime, and I want you to feel and understand how you're not just appreciated, and how you're not just affecting our little area, our county, but the state. And I want to say thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Tisdale.
Good evening, my name's Mark Tisdale. I'm a parent of a D11 elementary school student, and I've heard not only repeatedly from her school, but I heard earlier tonight this praising of SEL. Yet I've yet to have anybody, either at my daughter's school or from this administration, be able to show me the actual data that they claim is behind supporting these activities. We continually act as if it's improving the performance of students, yet we act like we're doing, like this is occurring in a vacuum. We act like four years ago, we didn't pull every kid in the country out of school and send them at home, and we act like there isn't a recovery time for that. I just would like us to be more honest, more upfront, and more open about what the actual data, what people are seeing, and how they're justifying these big programs. Because we look at, my daughter's had a long-term sub this entire year. She's, at the end of the semester, the long-term sub that has taken care of her class for the first part of the year, decided to leave, and so now, starting this week, she is a new teacher. My daughter is not learning anything in school. We are worried about these things that are not academic-related. My priorities for my daughter at school are for her to learn, read, learn how to do mathematics, learn principles of science. It's not any, it's not, we're wasting a lot of time in things that just are not the priority. We wonder why American students are falling behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Langston. Larry Langston. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larry Langston. I just want to encourage you guys to continue your great work you guys have been doing. Just keep pressing on and get the word out. I mean, you gotta get communications out there, TikTok video, whatever. There's plenty of schools out there that would love to do that for you guys. I mean, you guys, I'm just looking at some of the stuff you guys have done. You got a teacher ratio of less than 16 teachers, I mean, 16 students to teachers. That's incredible. They would love to have that in certain other states. And I'm looking at what the top schools are in the nation. I didn't see District 11 in there. I think you guys should be in the top 100. That's all I got to say. Just keep on pressing on, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all the comments I had, Ms. Olson? Did I miss anything? Okay. So that's-
Do you want to ask the Thomas McLaren ones again? Just because they're an action item, I don't know if they're good.
Well, I called out their names, they didn't respond back. Catherine Brophy from Thomas McLaren, and Bridget Richter. I don't see either of them there. Okay. So thank you for being, sharing your thoughts with the Board in public comments. The Board appreciates your feedback. I know several of you had passionate remarks to share about the Gifted Magnet Program and its relocation. I want to assure you, the Board will consider all your feedback, the one we received here today, and also the one we received through the email, and consider the overall impact of everyone involved before arriving at a decision, after the discussion that we have later from the Board Dais this evening. And if you checked the box asking a district administration person to contact you, someone from administration will follow up and contact you. So moving on with that, that's the end of public comments. The next item is special reports, Board member reports. Do we have any Board member reports at this point in time? Director Nelson.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We have so much to celebrate. Last week, the Board received information on our mid-year achievement levels, and we have students exceeding or meeting grade level in math by 3.6 percentage points. What does that mean? It means we've moved 530 kids from not being at grade level up to meeting or exceeding grade level in a year. Let's celebrate that. It's better. An ELA, 4.8 percentage points. That means 700 more kids are now meeting or exceeding grade level. For the first time in years, a majority of our subpopulation's students, including free and reduced lunch, met or exceeded a year's worth of growth in ELA and math. While there is still much work to be done, we are on track to close gaps for our minority and most-at-risk students. Go back and watch the last Board meeting spotlight on career technical education and college-level opportunities in District 11 if you missed it. 4,500 students are currently taking advantage of at least one CTE class this year. The work in this area is impressive. Yesterday, I attended the K-12 principal meeting and learned more about the amazing work happening in our schools. I personally benefited from the energy in the room coming from the collaboration among schools, leaders, and the support teams. And tonight, we are voting to further support choice in D11 when we vote on the Thomas McLaren Charter School contract. There are amazing things happening in District 11 at this point in time, and the story of District 11, I haven't even hit on all of them. I just, I just wanted to recognize some of these wins, you guys. We still have a long way to go to improve academic achievement levels for all, but we need to recognize the hard work and success that is occurring. Thank you to our teachers, education support professionals, administrative staff, and Mr. Gall, for the positive impact you are having on D11 students. Go team! We, yeah, we are headed in the right direction, and as we look to the future, we need to take stock of what's working and what isn't. Dr. Comfort and I are participating in an education finance certification course over the next several weeks online, and it kicked off with an in-person session late last week. We learned strategies on how to use our financial resources to do the most for students, and I look forward to begin implementing some of our takeaways. Using the data point of cost per student to help the Board reach decisions is one such takeaway. The budget bill process for next school year has already begun, and the Board's mission is to get the dollars closest to the students. How do we support the most students with the limited funding we have? Where is the money going, and are we seeing improved outcomes? I want us to look at our current budget through the lens of our major improvement strategies. What percentage of the dollars can be directly connected to best-first instruction, improving communication to families, and observation coaching and feedback strategies, which we've outlined in our district improvement plan, to achieve our SMART goals? Are we funding appropriately the goals we're striving to achieve, or do we need to make adjustments for the next year? I'll leave you with this quote presented at the finance class by Lee Johnson and Joyce from Public Budgeting Systems. Budgeting is the manifestation of an organization's strategies, whether those strategies are the result of the thoughtful strategic planning processes, of the inertia of long years of doing approximately the same thing, or of the competing of political forces within the organization bargaining for shares of the resources. For the kids, we have to be strategic. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Director Nelson. Especially when we, as a school board, talk about student success as the primary priority of the school board, and last week we talked about the percentages of numbers, but when you translate that into actual number of students that are being impacted by this, the numbers that you quoted, that's extraordinary. That's the difference that we are making. And the subpopulation, these are the most vulnerable students, that over and over again we say, the minority students, we need to be able to, whether they are socioeconomic gaps, or African-American students and Hispanic students, they, we need to bridge that gap and close that achievement gap. And for the first time, our numbers say that these students are growing after five years. So that's good work. Thanks to our staff. Director R.
Thank you. I want to recognize achievement in a different way. On January 16th, El Paso County PTA held their Reflections Awards Ceremony. I left all of you a little note in your mailboxes. D11 had winners from Doherty, Martinez, and Keller, and I just want to recognize or congratulate our students, and thank the teachers who put in the extra work to help their students enter, because I'm not sure that's always recognized or funded, for that matter. It might just be an extra effort they put in. So congratulations to the students and the teachers. Educating Children of Color Summit was the 13th, and I was happy to see that a number of District 11 educators braved the very cold day and came out to learn about how they can better serve their students. And I also wanted to let you know, since I was able to visit Rudy, one of my takeaways is they have an art night coming up Friday night from 6:00 to 7:00, and you're all invited, everyone's invited, to go out and see the students there. And, you know, speaking of PTA, one of the, PTA's goals, of course, is to be engaged as families, and it is PTA that's putting, helping out with that and supporting that art event at Rudy. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for representing the Board at the PTA event, and that was a cold evening too. I think that was the evening that the district was closed, so thank you for being there. And at the Educating Children of Color Summit that you were talking about, I think some of our students were awarded scholarships too, so it was good to see them recognized. Director Jorgensen.
Just a couple of brief comments here. We had the Doherty Future Center grand opening last Thursday. I was able to attend with a few other Board members there, so that was a wonderful event, lots of great energy, and looking forward to future discussions on bringing that to our other high school campuses in the future. And then, just a quick announcement of the School Choice Fair, that's this Saturday at the Great Wolf Lodge. We are in the middle of National School Choice Week. School Choice windows open, and as you've heard from Director Nelson, and if you've been paying attention, there's great things happening in D11. And if you are considering a D11 school, we would be, love to see you at our website, or the school's hosting some 5th grade and different open houses. This School Choice Fair is a variety of things, private charter, homeschool. We have a few booths there from D11 schools and programs, so head on over to there and check that out, and consider a D11 school. And I believe that's all I got, so thank you.
Thank you. And the Future Center event that you were talking about, well, I don't have pictures. I think it's on social media. But the first school was Doherty. What I wanted to share was that we plan on opening a Future Center at each one of our traditional high schools, so our students can have that support. So look forward to that coming up in the next few months. And I will summarize a couple of my comments. And on Friday, I was planning on visiting West Elementary School, actually, and talking to the principal for about an hour. The previous day evening, at about 10 o'clock, I opened my email to, 10 o'clock in the night, I opened my email to check my email, and I saw an email from Ms. Julie Anderson, who just addressed the Board earlier this evening. And I was so touched by the email that you sent to the Board and what you talked about, how this impacted your students. So I said like, okay, before I go to West, I will stop at Fremont, and I just showed up out there and talked to the principal for a few minutes, and then said, could I come and visit the GMP program? And Ms. Olson, if you can pull up the Board member report. And all three of you were gracious enough to accommodate you in your classroom just for a few minutes, and then engage with your students too. What I saw was what you already conveyed out there, the rigor of instruction that was taking place. So thank you so much for giving me that opportunity, and also talking to your students. And at Fremont, in Ms. Anderson's class, I got to sit with the 4th grade small group of students, and you guys were discussing the Emily Dickinson poem out there, and these kids are amazing, and you see the value in these kinds of programs sometimes, that they get to interact with peers that are challenging them, that sometimes the gifted and talented students can sail through a school, because coursework is not very challenging for them. But when you put them through their, along with their peers, they get to get that rigor in instruction to, there is this game, are you smarter than a 5th grader? And sitting with that group, I don't think I'm smarter than a 4th grader. So they are really amazing students. And the same thing happened at West Middle School. I went there anticipating to stay there for one hour. I, by the time I left there, I left, I started at 10 o'clock, and by the time I left there, it was 4 o'clock in the evening. So I got to meet with them for six hours. With, the pictures here are primarily of students that I engaged with, but I engaged with the staff out there, the parent community, and the students. And I will share a little bit more in the, when we discuss this as an action item, but what I want to, my main takeaway was how civil, professional, and lively that discussion was, whether we agreed or disagreed. Sometimes the nature of this, the discourse in this country at this time is heated, but that was not the case here. Our students were well-spoken, and they were professional, they articulated really well. It was the same thing with our community members. So thank you for welcoming me, welcoming me into your classroom and schools, and thank you for providing your feedback, which we will, which I will certainly provide to the Board and the Superintendent. The next slide, and this was already, you can click the next one to the button. So this, this was already talked by Director Nelson. I was there at the K-12 principals' meeting too, yesterday, and it was amazing to see a whole bunch of principals out there, the principals from all our K-12 schools, looking at the data analysis that we looked at, the mid-year data that we looked at, and how in-depth that they were diving into it. It gave me a bigger picture and understanding as to why we are seeing all these growth that we are seeing in our classrooms, because it starts in that room with the principals talking with each other, and the support that they get from Superintendent Gall and Ms. Asavedo and her team, and the area superintendents that talked too. They were sharing best practices. Some of the principals that saw considerable growth and achievement in their schools shared what they were doing in their schools to achieve that to the other principals out there. So sharing those best practices, knowing that this works in certain schools, then we can expand it to other schools, to the PLC opportunities that take place in their schools, the building leadership opportunities that take place in their schools. So I know that this is the second or the third Principal's K-12 meeting that I'm attending, and this is the first time that Board members have been invited to attend a Principal, K-12 Principals' Meeting. So I don't know what went on three or four years back in those meetings, but there is some amazing coaching and instruction and problem-solving that's happening in that room, and thank you Superintendent Gall and your team to invite the Board, and I would strongly encourage other Board members that if you have time in your future schedule to attend one of those programs. So that's all I had. Director Bankus, you had a comment? Yes, please.
Giving your, your report out on how civil and professional conversations have been, I want to give a quote, and I would love to be able to tell you whose quote it is, but I wrote this a long time ago, and I lost the originator. And the quote is, "To move education forward, we need discussion and debate. We need the clarity that comes from the examination of ideas. We need the opportunity to grow in new directions." And I think we are demonstrating that each and every way, when we have public comment, when we have visitors showing up, when we have an opportunity to have dialogue that moves us forward. Messy, yes. Kind of scary, yes. But I think we're all focused on student-centered, and I think we have been civil. I think we have been professional. And I want to compliment all of you who came tonight, and those who've come before, and those who will come after this meeting. Thank you for your input, because we as a board, and I feel comfortable saying this for the whole board, that we take what you say internally, we look at it, examine it, and put it back to our priorities to see how we as a group can all work together and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bankus. Seeing no further comments from board members, I'm moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the legislative update. Dr. Comfort, Superintendent Gaul, Dr. Comfort is here, and Mr. Pepper is here, too. Dylan Pepper, so I'll turn it over to you first.
Because Dylan's a repeat, I don't think he needs any other introduction. Dylan Pepper, welcome back, and we look forward to legislative session. If you want to give us a quick summary here and move us along.
Mr. Pepper, welcome. It's good to see you in person again. It just seems like we talked to you a few months, a few weeks back, actually, and here we are at the start of another legislative session. Since the last time you talked to the board, there are two new board members on this board after the November election. So if you can briefly introduce yourself and also talk a little bit about what is happening in the legislature at this point in time over the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for having me. And for those of you who haven't met, I'm Dylan Pepper. I worked with the Colorado Springs District 11 last year. We were able to really accomplish quite a few things, particularly in the school finance space, where we were able to, you know, coalesce about, you know, 100 different signatories representing about 700,000 students around a pretty unified school finance plan. And that's part of what I want to update you guys on tonight. So since the last time we met, I just kind of wanted to give a general overview. We've had a little bit of turnover, you may have read about it, the state legislature. So we've had four new members filled through vacancy committees. In total, about a third of the legislature is new to their chamber or new to the legislature. I bring that up because that means that there is, the historic knowledge isn't really there right now. And so we have an education gap. As you guys try to educate students, we have to educate legislators on, you know, what is it that school districts do? Why is school funding important? What are schools really doing? And that takes time. The other thing I wanted to kind of update you on, and I know this was a priority of the district, was the universal preschool program. Since the last time we met, a lawsuit was filed, and it was kind of around two different areas. The first was full funding for the universal preschool program, and the second was in violations of the federal IDEA laws. And that is because the universal preschool program's about $38 million underfunded for special education students. So that is currently ongoing. That's something that Budget Committee and the legislature's going to be a top priority this year, and I wanted to bring that kind of to the top of your attention as we get to the next slide, which is what does the state budget look like? There are a lot of pressing needs, and as I've, you know, as I've talked to you guys last year, and I, you know, looking before that, we saw that, you know, the state got about $8 billion in federal money that they could spend. That money has all largely been spent, and now we, now the state budget is much tighter than we, you know, they have become accustomed to. So what that means is now it's really a conversation about priorities, and how do we prioritize the different areas of the state budget, and where do we invest that money? And that's going to be a conversation that the Joint Budget Committee, as well as the House and Senate have, is how do we balance their priorities with how do we balance the priorities of the governor? And so I laid out kind of some of the priorities that the governor laid out in front of you. Investing in schools is definitely a high priority. Wants to pay off the budget stabilization factor fully this year. But as you can see, there's quite a few other competing, competing priorities and goals. And so we have to keep that in mind as we kind of dig in. And here's where he, you know, kind of lays out his budget proposal for the next fiscal year. Top of, top of the list is $141 million. As you remember, last year, part of the School Finance Act, we were able to secure that in the School Finance Act that said you actually have to pay this down over two years. So that is the commitment that they made last year that they are fulfilling. They're also doing, and this is another constitutionally required increase of $25 million for categorical programs. The next one is $15 million for the State Charter School Mill levy Equalization Fund, bringing total funding to $42 million for that program. That program has increased from about $5 million to full funding, $42 million in the last four years or so. So there's been a significant investment made on behalf of the legislature and governor into the Mill levy Charter School Mill levy Equalization Fund. Additionally, he's doing $8 million for more focus on science, technology, engineering, math grants to fund after-school enrichment programs. This is kind of modeled after his math, math budget item that he passed last year, which was, you know, an opt-in for districts and not an unfunded mandate. Finally, he's doing $4.3 million for universal preschool, the majority of which goes to statewide technology. The Bridge Care System still needs quite a bit of work, and that is all for, I think that's the nicest way I can say that, needs quite a bit of programming and updating. And so that's meant to help kind of fill in that gap. Finally, is $7.8 million, and I know this is a priority of the board based on your legislative priorities, $7.8 million to boost work-based learning in K-12 education. This is going to be also a part of, I wanted to highlight here, a larger discussion at the legislature this year, is how do we do our workforce funding? Where does that money go? Are we investing in, you know, data-based evidence-informed programs? Because the state invests about $250 million each year in various workforce development initiatives with very little tracking, with very little outcome data, and, you know, things like that. So the Budget Committee, as well as the Committees of Reference, are really going to try to dig in and say, you know, where, where, how can we get more value for our investment? How can we make sure we're training the, you know, the workforce of the future? How can we re, you know, reskill or upskill existing workers? And then also, how does, you know, the K-12 system play a role in that, in making sure we really are getting our students ready for the future jobs? Last thing I wanted to, whoop, I'll go back real quick. Last thing I want to talk about here was the School Finance Interim, or School Finance Supplemental, which passed about an hour before I came up here. Ultimately, what happened this year is pupil count was actually up by about 1,100 students or so, and at-risk was higher by about 12%. So that drove $61 million of additional state revenue that they would have to contribute. As I heard during public comment, people noticed that their tax bills went up pretty significantly, so the local share of revenue came in about $85 million higher. So they are, that, that offset the additional increase because of the other, and they put $24 million into the state education fund that they can spend next year. So the biggest area, and I think this is going to be the biggest thing we talk about consistently as I meet with you guys, is the School Finance Task Force and school finance generally. So part of what we did last year when we got everybody together is, you know what? Let's not make any changes this year. Let's let a task force go study. And I had kind of forecast to you guys, you know, we've been studying this for 10 years, and we really haven't made much progress. And I didn't hold out much hope that these guys were, this group was going to find much success. They, they've definitely proven me wrong. And of the five things you see there, the only one they really didn't dig into was number five, which is securing equalization in mill levies. I think that's a much harder thing to do legislatively, because we can't really equalize tax bases across the state of Colorado. We can't build a tech center or an airport in every district, and so they didn't really get into that, and they instead left that as a more broad topic that the legislature should, you know, it was aspirational. You guys definitely should go do something about this if you can. So I just kind of want to walk you through the changes that were made. Ultimately, on a net, it's a different conversation than we were having last year, where D-11 is a net winner under this scenario. I will say this is, we are at step one of a marathon race with this, and this will be something that we continually update you on, making sure that D-11 is in the best position moving forward. So here's some of the changes that they made, and, you know, like I said, the first one on securing mill levy equalization was just a conversation more aspirational. These next ones on prioritizing student need, they really looked at at-risk and ELL, as well as Tier A and Tier B special education funding, increasing the weight in the existing formula on that. I want to note that the at-risk is the, using the existing at-risk definition and not the new at-risk definition that that task force has worked pretty hard on over the last couple of years. And then they also talked about adding a Tier C of special education in. Ultimately, did not include that in their final recommendation, because that drives a rather significant fiscal note. I will say, as we get to the end here, it is kind of a sticker shock a little bit. It's about a half billion dollars, $500 million of new additional state funding that would be needed to implement these changes. So here's kind of the other things that really do impact some of the district. Getting away from the student-centered factors is eliminating multiplicative indices or indexes, and revising the cost-of-living factor. Because, you know, our district is a higher-cost-of-living area, it does benefit under the existing cost-of-living factor in the formula. Thankfully, with the way that they revised the student-centered formulas, Colorado, D-11's about a net $11 million winner. So even under this proposal, where they take about $900 million out of the cost-of-living factor and put it into the student ELL and at-risk factors, on a whole, most districts are coming out ahead. And then here's kind of the last two factors, revising the size factor and additional recommendations. So they kind of tried to change the size factor, because part of what we discussed last year is how do we get away from this urban versus rural, you know, metro, suburban, suburban versus urban? And so they tried to make it so rural, had multiple factors, multiple, you know, not every, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We can't just say you're a rural district, and therefore you get, you know, $1 extra. So they put in several more factors related to the rural discussion. On a whole, I'd say about 70% of the new funding is going towards rural schools. I think that is going to be a conversation that is had, is how do we invest $500 million and 700,000 students don't see much or any benefit? And that needs, you know, that, that's going to be more of a political conversation, I think, and once again, that, you know, priorities conversation down at the legislature. So here's kind of how they do it. So like I said, they reduced the cost-of-living factor by about $900 million. They reduced the size factor by about $300 million, and then they put it into those other four categories with special education, ELL, and at-risk really being the student-centered factors, and then the remoteness really being that kind of rural factor. Here's kind of a, you know, I guess I'd call it a heat map of net winners or losers. As you can kind of see, south of E470 along the I-25 corridor until you get to D-11, didn't fare as well under this proposal. And that's because they didn't, they benefited disproportionately, I would say, with the cost of living, and didn't have high numbers of at-risk or ELL students to make up for that funding difference. So here it is, just kind of broken out for you. The final recommendation they made was essentially a five-year phase-in. So no district would see an immediate loss of funding. In year one, that's about a $64 million hold harmless factor that they proposed. And these numbers that you see on the right side of the screen here are all negative numbers. So that would be, you know, Douglas County, Academy 20, all losing funding over their, you know, what they got this year. So when I say D-11 kind of finished in a much nicer position under this proposal, it's, it's pretty surprising when you see some of these other districts. So getting to this mill levy and mill levy override equalization conversation, this is something that we've talked a lot about because of when D-11 and the de-brucing discussion, that our mills are pretty significantly below 27 mills. The state has, for several years, talked about how do we bring everybody up and, you know, get that to a statewide unified 27 mills? I will say, this conversation largely has not been at the forefront while the other things have been discussed. I always want to be, you know, vigilant of potential risk to the district. This remains a potential risk. It will as long as the state needs more money, which they always do. But it, for, for the time being, I don't see this as the most pressing issue facing the district or the most pressing area of risk that we have. And I would also say the same on the override equalization, where they've, you know, these districts that are able to pass overrides, they've talked about how do we create, you know, a luxury tax essentially, using a sports term, that if you are able to, you know, pass a mill, how do we redistribute some of that to every district around the state? And that conversation really hasn't, you know, proceeded much in the last, since I've spoken to you guys last. So I provided the link here, and I can go one of two ways, and I'll go, I'll defer to you guys. I'm happy to highlight legislation that I picked, you know, that, that kind of, you know, I've determined, in total, there's been about 155 bills introduced this session. 23 of them is related to education policy. For those of you who don't follow the legislature like I do, we usually see about 700 bills. About 100 of them are related to education policy. So we are very early on in the process here. But I'm happy to walk through kind of some of the bills I've highlighted, or if you guys have heard bills and want to ask me questions, I'm happy to do it either way, so whichever you prefer.
Okay, let's take a minute, and what I want to talk to the board and also the community is, right in front of you is this card that the board adopted in the consent agenda. Was it in the consent agenda today? Yeah, it was in the consent agenda. Oh, we are going to be, yeah, we are going to be adopting in the consent agenda. It's been a long evening already. But Mr. Pepper, you are aware of this card, too. I've shared this with you. So please do share. This essentially is what we, as a board, are advocating for and supporting for. So if there are any specific bills that impact this, either support or opposing, that you want to highlight and point to us, that would be a good way to start this conversation, too. Or if the board has specific bills that they want to talk about, that would be okay, too. Do you guys have any specific questions to Mr. Pepper on what he presented so far, and if you have any specific bills that you want to talk to him? Let's go that direction, and then we can come back to you. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, I had a couple of bills already kind of come across my understanding, and they go against a couple of our governing schools and unfunded mandates. And I think the most concerning one is House Bill 241039, which was introduced by my own House District Representative, unfortunately. But this bill basically requires schools to use a student's preferred name when requested by the student, deeming the school's refusal to do so a form of discrimination. No parental or guardian consent required in this proposed bill. Teachers in schools must comply, not only verbally, here's the kicker, but also in print, on classroom rosters, yearbooks, ID cards, without requiring a court order name change. Allow me to read a portion of this bill as it was recently introduced. Public school or institute charter schools, so for our charters that we're approving tonight potentially, this addresses you. Schools shall address a student by the student's preferred name and use the student's preferred name in school during extracurricular activities and on rosters, attendance lists, yearbooks, student identification cards, and any other unofficial school recording requested by the student, without requiring the student to obtain a court order name or gender change or to change a student's official records. A school's refusal to respect a student's request to use a preferred name is discriminatory. Such a refusal includes a refusal to use a student's preferred name in school during all those different things, and any other unofficial school recording student requests a preferred name to be used for, without requiring the student to obtain, again, the court order name or gender change. Also adds a nine-member task force, so just further bureaucracy. The cherry on top is a safety clause, so it makes it basically unrepellable in a ballot initiative. This is just alarming that we would be giving so much power to minors. I get the, and I think we can all agree, this is not about, hey, my name's William, call me Bill. This is about other things where we are usurping parent and guardian rights in the classroom and creating a bunch of headaches for our school registrars, our, you know, different tracking systems, our Power School records. I mean, this is a mess of a bill already.
So just to start, kind of, I assume you know the history. This came out of an interim committee. I will say, I'm not a lawyer. I went to the Judge Judy School of Law. As this bill is currently written, there are federal constitutional issues with it.
Yeah.
So those, and I don't see a way state legislation can get around constitutional issues, mostly because they can't. So I believe if, if the vote happened today, at a minimum, this bill would get taken down to just the task force, and the whole first section related to, like, that you laid out there would get removed, and it would be a study bill on, you know, how could you do this? Because separate from the constitutional issues, the, that you laid, that I said, you laid out some of the more how implementation-type issues, there isn't a software currently that allows this to happen. So there is no way for schools to action this meaningfully. So this is going to be a much larger conversation, and I think it will, it, it's not going away regardless of what happens. regardless of what happens this year is what I would say.
Well, I guess we'll have to fight it every year.
What was your last comment? If it's not that.
I do not believe that we will continue to see this, I believe, in future legislative sessions, even if it comes, even if they do what they say they're going to do and kind of pull out that first section.
Okay. The other one I put on your radar is Senate Bill 24-014, which is the Seal of Climate Literacy Diploma Endorsement. And just, again, an extra made-up stuff of climate literacy, which we can assume is just, I mean, it is a mess of things. That adds more, just extra imposing of things to our already approved curriculum and it kind of goes against our, again, local controls. So I'd put that on your radar as well.
I think they're looking at kind of limiting that bill to higher education courses and not to K-12.
Perfect.
So keep us posted. Let us know about updates on either one of those bills that Director Jorgensen brought about. Yeah, and I will get to Thomas. We have clearly indicated that this board is recognizing parent voice and choice and that is reflected in our legislation agenda, that we recognize parent voice and choice in the education care and upbringing of their child. So we do not want parent authority diminished by state legislators. Okay, thank you. Dr. Carey.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have a question on a specific bill. There was something you said at the beginning of your presentation that I just want to ask you about. I'm not sure if I misheard you or not. Did you say we're thirty million underfunded for special education? Can you expand on that?
So when they, when they did the early childhood program and they changed the way they funded it through C cap with counties and they changed the way they funded it with K-12, it's about thirty-eight million dollars of special education funding that was supposed to be given to special education students, those four-year-olds in our schools, that isn't there. And Department of Education will say, you know, this is more of a human services issue. Human Services said this is a Department of Education issue and the Department of Early Childhood said it's both their faults. And so that is one of the, kind of the crux of the lawsuit that got filed is we are federally required to fund these students at a certain level and we are not currently meeting that. And the delta between that's about thirty-eight million dollars.
That's a statewide number, not a district impact.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are you done, Dr. Carey?
Yep.
Director Bankus.
In the past, it was said that the state provided maybe seventy-five percent of special ed funding. Is that still an appropriate percentage or is it less now?
It's probably less than that now. I mean, the state's made a pretty significant investment, particularly in Tier A and Tier B special education funding over the last couple of years. But once again statewide, it's about a billion-dollar shortfall that districts are covering that is not either federally funded or state-funded.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions to Mr. Pepper at this time? Okay. Are there any other legislation that you want to spotlight? Is that link something that is going to be constantly updated as new legislations are being introduced for the board?
It is and we switched to Fast Democracy this year so you can subscribe and get emails to this link. I can go back to the other one if you guys prefer that. So I take your direction is kind of what, this one's supposed to be more user-friendly was the goal. So look at it and let me know if you don't like it, we can go back to the other one. But yes, it updates automatically. I think the only thing I kind of wanted to highlight, particularly around the educator shortage issue, is there is a bill that's being contemplated that would make contractors have to pay into para. So if you have long-term substitutes, like I heard a few people mention during public comment tonight, those long-term subs, more than thirty days, would have to start paying into para. I have a concern about the cost of that. I also have a concern that the school division would be the only division in para paying into that. So I just wanted to highlight that as an issue that likely could be coming, that likely does affect all one hundred and seventy-eight districts across our state.
Okay. Just keep us informed about that to ask this progresses. I know that the legislative session just started, so we will certainly look into this link. And you said that we needed to subscribe to the?
It's an option if you want. You can click subscribe and you get emails.
Okay.
So if you don't want it, I didn't want to fill everybody's inbox up assuming you wanted these, so you're able to subscribe to it if you want and get kind of daily emails and updates on the bills in the folder.
Okay. So board members, take a look at this link and let me or Mr. Pepper know, go through me, I guess, then I can let Mr. Pepper know if this is satisfactory for you to receive the information about updated bills or would you go back to the previous system that Mr. Pepper was using last year? Okay. Quickly, one thing that I do want to get some guidance from the board and also get your feedback on it. One of our local elected official commissioner, Carrie Geithner, she contacted me and I think your group, management group, could be representing the commissioners too. Is that my understanding? She said something about Mr. Mark Beasley.
Mike Beasley, yeah. So I work with Mike. He represents El Paso County, so I do some human services work for the county, human services budget work.
Okay. So the essential crux of the email that she sent to the board and sent to me and I forwarded to the board was that she wanted to get strength in numbers by having a lot of the local elected officials come together and advocate for issues that pertain to this region or this county and there is strength in numbers when we unite together and talk to our legislators. And that is something that I want to ask the board's opinion on and see if the board would be interesting, interested in collectively signing to that initiative that's called the Pike's Peak Promise Coalition. I did have a good conversation with Commissioner Geithner last week and there is some valid points that she is making that if we can collectively come together as a group, is that something that you see value in that, Mr. Pepper?
I think on areas of shared interest, absolutely. So I would not have a prob, I mean, I defer to you guys, but I think particularly on areas of shared interest, like I said, the state is not a monolith. It is not a one-size-fits-all, but where you can find commonalities between the county and the district, I think they're definitely a strength in numbers, so I would agree with that.
Okay. Is that something the board is interested in doing collectively as a board or would you like to individually do it separately as board members? That's all the guidance I need. If you want to show, okay. Director Ott.
Thank you. I would want to know, I have not read that email, so I would like to know more about it. Maybe we can talk about it at the retreat because not knowing more clearly what their goals are and where our common interests are, I think we would be irresponsible to agree.
Okay.
So quickly.
The email that I sent you has the letter that came from Commissioner Geithner and it has all the necessary information that was forwarded to the board almost a month back, I think. So I would suggest that you guys look at it and if this is a conversation you want to bring to the retreat next week, we can certainly defer until that point in time. Director Bankus.
I did read the email and I did read the letter and I agree with Dr. Director Ott that this needs to be a conversation and I would like to see it happen at the retreat.
Great. Let's have this conversation at the retreat at that point in time and then we can provide an answer to Commissioner Geithner. If the board doesn't want to go together as a board in this, then individual board members can sign to that coalition too if there is areas that we can collectively advocate for. And then as we go forth, as we get regular updates from you, Mr. Pepper, what I would like to see from the board, if you are good with that, is usually Mr. Pepper comes and provides us updates on certain selective bills, but if we, the board, the majority of the board wants to support a certain bill or oppose a certain bill, that we show by thumbs up that we want Mr. Pepper to advocate for or against that bill, that's his essential role as a lobbyist for District 11. So in the previous sessions that we've had, we've been more a listening board, providing feedback, but if we can collectively give him a feedback about these, based on this agenda that we have set, so we can take a more proactive stance on some of these bills and how they impact K-12 education in District 11. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Oh. Director Nelson.
Sorry, I want to add another one to your radar, SB 24-049, and I believe it's establishing a process for content of material in libraries. And as I'm reading it, I think it still allows for that local control and school districts to define kind of the committee and how the process might look, but I would just like to know.
Yeah, and I'll say on that bill, there's probably not as much local control in there as you would hope.
Oh, okay. That was my concern.
It's quite a bit more restrictive. That bill's going to go through significant changes before it, you know, gets to its final place, but we will definitely keep an eye out on that.
Okay.
So, yes.
Add that to your list. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trip up here and talking to us and we look forward to working with you. Oh, okay. We look forward to engaging with you too in the future. And I will give the last comment to Director Ott. Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to make a note about that bill. The CASB Board met this last weekend and I'm a member of the Board of Colorado Association of Schools. They decided to oppose that bill. There were members voting for it and against it, so it was mixed, but the concern was the local control. Certainly people want us to be responsible about our library materials, but the local control angle, many, 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 many districts already have policies addressing challenges to our library materials and so we feel like, or the majority of the board felt like we go above and beyond in our districts and it's about local control for us, so that was a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we can furnish you with some of these cards if you want to distribute it to the legislators when you are talking with them.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Consent items. Director Carey, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are: C2, approval of January 10th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. There's a number of these. C3, personnel recommendations, January 24th, 2024. C4, resolution for 2024-2025 African American History Month. C5, resolution 2024, I'm assuming this is a typo and should read 25, Career and Technical Education Month. C6, policy IJOA field trips. C7, legislative agenda. C8, designation of official posting, location for Board of Education meetings and notices. And C9, district-wide closure due to inclement weather.
So moved and seconded, Ms. Olson, the resolution numbers are correct, right? As set out there, it's resolution 2024-25 is African American History Month and resolution 2024-24 is Career and Technical Education.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moved and seconded, and I do want to let the board know that policy BID-BIE with which the board moved into consent, I pulled it into action because some changes were made and I wanted to bring that to the board's awareness before we adopted it. With that, roll call, please. Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus. Aye. Director Carey.
Aye.
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The consent items have been adopted. Action items, the first action item that we have is the contract award, C2024-0053, charter school contract with Thomas McLaren for a five-year term. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item D1?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves resolution 2024-26, thus approving contract C2024-0053 to Thomas McLaren School, TMS, as a district authorized charter school. The contract performance will start January 1st, 2024 and has a five-year term ending June 30th, 2029, subject to any earned contract extensions through the annual performance report process in accordance with policy LBD.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Just to provide some context to the community, the board approved the Thomas McLaren Charter School application on September 27th, at which time the board directed the district to enter into contract negotiations between the district and Thomas McLaren School. And this is the contract that is in front of the board at this time for approval. Superintendent Gall, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce your team members and update the board.
Dr. Mendelsburg, any new updates? Mary Faith, please come and stand and just say hello again. It'd be great just to see you all. The teams have been working very hard to get to this space and so we have a contract here for approval. It's an exciting time as we talk about District 11 using portfolio strategies to celebrate parent choice. Thomas McLaren is a longstanding, very strong example of delivering an equitable and excellent education for all. And anything else, Scott?
No, sir. We'll turn it over. Mary Faith, anything?
No, I just want to thank the D11 staff who answered a lot of our questions in the last couple of months and I'm really pleased to have this contract in front of you today.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank you too and all the people that were involved in those negotiations of the contract. The initial resolution called for ninety days in which the contract needed to be done and then we ran into the winter break and the holidays. So thanks for the extension that you provided and I think that's being called out in the resolution that, and now we are in a space where all the ayes have been dotted and t's have been crossed and we have agreed on all the necessary contract details. Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any questions after you had a chance to review the contract itself? Okay, seeing none, that was quick, so it was probably good work. Oh, Director Nelson.
Not a question, just a comment. Welcome. So very exciting to have you guys join the D11 family.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus. Aye. Director Carey.
Aye.
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The board unanimously approved the contract that was presented in front of it and as Director Nelson said, welcome to District 11 and we hope to have a wonderful partnership with you going forth. Keep us informed about the activities that are going on and the events and all the various programs that are going in your school and we look forward to a long and productive partnership. Thank you. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add?
Just welcome to the team. Super excited, local authorization, portfolio strategies. We are giving public education back to the public and you're a big part of that. Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you for all your team members being here. Are there any people that you want to recognize up here? Are you all with Thomas McLaren up here? Okay. Thank you all for being here and carry that message to your staff and team members. We look forward to visiting your school and interacting with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on the action agenda item is mid-year modifications for the 2023-24 adopted budget. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item D2?
I move that the Board of Education adopts resolution 2024-23 mid-year modifications to the 2023-2024 adopted budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This information was presented to the board as non-action item during the January 10th regular board meeting. We had a robust discussion at that time on all the mid-year modifications that were proposed. Superintendent Gall has stepped out, so Dr. Comfort, do we have any additional information at this point in time?
Good evening. There have been no changes to the mid-year budget outside of a few minor grammatical corrections. Thank you, Director Ott. And so no other changes have been made since the non-action.
Okay. Board, do you have any further questions since a couple of weeks back that you want to address before I call for approval from the board? Seeing none? Seeing none? Thank you for all your hard work and roll call, please. Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus. Aye. Director Carey.
Aye.
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The mid-year budget that was proposed to the board has been adopted. The ayes have it. The mid-year budget, mid-year budget that was, uh, proposed to the board has been adopted. And I know a lot of work went into it. Mr. Co- Dr. Comfort, please thank your team, Mr. Ms. Heronik, Ms. Heronik too, as she put in a lot of work, and the DAC for providing feedback to the board. The third item on the agenda is policy BID BIE, uh, board member compensation. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item D3?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the revisions to policy BID BIE.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Uh, Ms. Olson, if you can pull up that document that is attached in, um, board docs, as, uh, Dr. X, you can come up, and, uh, I'm happy to, um, uh, inform the board about the minor changes that were made. And this all came about with, um, one of our community members, Mr. Kaiser, uh, proposing some changes to that, um, policy just to make it, um, more appropriate, the, um, to bring some clarity to what was in there. So that's all it was. Um, let's push, let's, the red line version. Dr. X, do you want to take?
Yeah, thank you, President Malpackham, members of the board. Uh, we took the suggestions from two weeks ago for BID BIE, and we incorporated those into, uh, the version that you see in front of you. We did use the clean version from two weeks ago to act as the canvas for the red line, so uh, you kind of have, um, something to work off of. Uh, we obviously moved some paragraphs around, um, took some language and, uh, changed that. Also took a look at roles that were identified within uh, the policy and made sure that those, uh, read clearly. Uh, for example, um, Secretary of the Board or Secretary to the Board of Education, to be very specific, and cleaned up the process for, um, reimbursements.
Thank you. Um, so just to let the board know that language that isn't right up there, it was there for the reimbursement part of it, but we are, if you pull it back up, uh, Ms. Olson, right to the very top. Uh, what it does is that any compensation or reimbursement has to be authorized by the board treasurer. Um, so putting the checks and balances in the system, that's all that is. And then as you pull it down, um, uh, Ms., um, Olson, yeah, right there, uh, the board secretary is Director Jorgensen, and we don't want everything going to Director Jorgensen. We want it going to the secretary to the Board of Education, which is Ms. Olson out there.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. And, you know, that was, uh, Mr. Kaiser correcting that language, so it's not, um, going to you, so. Um, and, um, the limit that has been set for reimbursements for board professional development and mileage and things of that nature, right now is about $3,500 per board member. That's the limit. Even though the policy calls for board officer positions to have a higher amount of allocation, we as a board haven't done that. We have set it at $3,500 for every board member, but there is flexibility in the policy as we go into each budget cycle. If the board desires that we can allocate more for the officer position. Um, but if the amount goes beyond that $3,500 for a board member, then it comes to the entire board for board approval. Uh, it could potentially happen for one or two board members in this, uh, academic year, uh, because they have uh, taken on, uh, learning opportunities and visiting, um, uh, other professional, um, uh, committees and, uh, organizations, uh, conferences and things of that nature. Uh, if you pull further down, uh, yeah. Based on board feedback, we removed, um, the $30 per month for internet access. Uh, all of us currently have internet access, and we don't avail of that. And lastly, the printer part of it, uh, we also removed that part of it. That's all. Okay. Any questions or, uh, comments from the board before I call for roll call? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes, the ayes, the ayes have it, and the policy BID BIE has been revised. This was the next item on the agenda is the GT Academic Master Plan Update and Program Relocation. This was moved from non-action to action to be timely in taking action on this issue. Uh, I know that several schools are having open houses at this point in time, and, uh, it's also school choice at this time. Parents make, uh, decisions about, uh, which school that they want to send their, um, student to for the next academic year, so this was moved up to action so that we can be timely in the decision-making process and provide that feedback to the administration, district-level administration, and also the building-level leadership, so they can promote and market these programs. The board made several requests, um, uh, at the previous, uh, work session, and I think Ms., um, Andrews is here to, uh, provide that data. But before we go there, uh, can I have, um, a motion for action item D4? Director Ott, can you please make the motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves the relocation of the Gifted Magnet program from West Middle School to Holmes Middle School, and from Fremont Elementary School to Freedom Elementary School.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gaul, I am going to hand it over to you to set up this topic of discussion and also provide the additional information that the board requested.
Uh, it, it won't be a surprise to anyone that we've invested a lot of time in trying to catch up on what was a late notification to both the board, the schools, and the community to meet this choice window. So we own that as a team, and we'll be working with the board on better timelines for significant change to make sure that it is reflective of all those voices as they are important. I've asked, uh, both Emily and Tamara to come forward. Much of this deck is what you saw at the work session, but there are new slides, um, uh, for the data that we were just using verbal for, but now they're on here, and, uh, we also added a slide that wasn't posted, which is a summary of policy that, um, represents the transportation rules around Gifted Magnet. Uh, we will repost that deck, but we thought it was important that we put it on a slide and not just verbalize it, because policy in itself can get wonky, and so we wanted to have those numbers visual to both the audience right now, and again, we will repost that. Tamara, over to you.
Great. Thank you, Board. Uh, I wanna thank you formally for, um, taking a look at the proposal to, uh, to realize our academic master plan and the programs and pathways with our Gifted Magnet program, um, specifically for intensive level of support for Tier 3 students, um, special needs gifted students. Um, I want to echo, we've had, um, we've appreciated all the feedback from community, staff, um, and then also the board engagements and the feedback directly from you all. Um, our listening sessions, our DAC, um, and the direct communications from schools and families. It's, it's been tremendous. Um, and we follow up with that feedback today, and we follow up, um, for future and have, um, future plans for that. Um, to echo what the superintendent said, um, in terms of the timeline and the rollout, we heard that from feedback. We want you to know that we, um, will, uh, take that feedback into heart as we move forward in realizing the vision in our academic master plan and the programs and pathways that we put forward. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our gifted and talented leader for the district, um, Emily. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Gaul, Ms. Asavedo, Director Malpackham, and the rest of the board. We, I really appreciate the time and energy and effort that you've invested into the listening sessions this week. You've heard heartfelt support and concern from staff members and from families. And I really appreciate the time that you took to invest in our community. I've spoken with multiple families as a part of this feedback process, as well as collected some information that you'll see on the slide deck here. Um, from what I can tell, as I visit with people and as you have visited with stakeholders, people are understanding the thought process behind this proposal, and for that, I appreciate, um, having the audience with families and with staff members to, um, to really help them gain understanding. I am also thankful to, um, share that I'm sure you all have seen that the principals at the potential receiving schools, Holmes and Freedom, that they are also very enthusiastic to have the opportunity to lead this initiative to bring the GMP to their school communities. As I hear from prospective families, um, they are very enthusiastic about this opportunity for school choice, and, um, many families have reached out to me requesting the Gifted Magnet application and understanding the process that goes into that. Thank you for highlighting, Superintendent Gaul. Thank you for highlighting the policies that we are, um, just reminding ourselves that, um, really speak to not only the application process and how the Gifted Magnet program, um, rolls out, um, its design for equity for our students, as well as that we provide transportation for our GMP students and for any siblings of GMP students. Say they're K1, 2, and their sibling is 3, 4, 5. Um, we are gonna provide transportation for those families. I spoke to two families today that are very interested in considering availing themselves of this opportunity as we consider this proposal. As requested, we have data for the GMP enrollment. You can see that Stratton and Saban are thriving programs that are at capacity, um, and are, are full and vibrant programs. Um, the Saban program, as you all know from last week, um, have two sections in each core academic area, whereas, um, Fremont and West have some room to grow, and we are confident that we, um, can fulfill our vision of the Gifted Magnet program, um, with the potential move so that we can double the number of students we can serve with the possibility of growing the program at Holmes to also serving two sections of academic core areas, um, in every grade level. You may also know that we are running a comparison study with our second-grade ability assessments, and, um, the results are showing, we're getting some really promising results to support the diversity and the students that are on free and reduced lunch, and I'm really thankful for that because we're looking for additional solutions to make sure that we can make our, um, Gifted and Talented and Gifted Magnet program, um, diversity reflect District 11's, and we're, we're making gains every year in that initiative.
So that middle slide should read 2022-23, right? Not 2023-23 at the very top. Just a minor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah.
Our GMP staffing ratios, you can see we really want to aim more for the board FTE allocation. That's a 1 to 25 um, ratio, teacher to student ratio, and at Fremont and West, we have some, um, significant gaps in that area, and that is one aspect that we believe that we can shore up to really have the right amount of FTE for the number of students in the program. Sure. Sure. Um, we believe in this program so much that we want to keep the program intact and, um, have all three grade levels represented at both elementary and middle schools. If we do not move the program, we will have other difficult choices to make in terms of staffing. We collected feedback and input from the staff groups at Fremont, Freedom, West, Holmes, as well as the gifted resource teachers in our quality neighborhood schools. For our surveys that we conducted, we had 64 responses from staff members, and this here, um, what you see here captures the survey data, um, that you can see that there is a fair amount of support among all of the staff that was surveyed, that they could see that the changes would benefit, um, more gifted students in District 11. Um, that you can see that, that many people fully support the change in the GMP, and that the benefits outweigh the costs. Please know that I also hear that the strongly disagree and the disagree, um, staff members have very important opinions, and, and I really appreciate that we've had the opportunity to hear them, um, because this is not an easy decision, and we are aware of that. Are there any additional questions this evening that I can field or that my esteemed colleagues can field as well?
I'm sure that there will be several questions, so, um, thank you for the additional data that the board requested, and that was one of the things that we talked about. Um, that we are not questioning, the board is not questioning what you are bringing in front of the board, but we wanted to be backed with actual data, so then we can look into the, have a more informed decision-making process. With that, uh, board members, I'm going to open it up for comments, discussion, questions, um, and as you, uh, punch in your buttons, I do want to share my thoughts and my feedback, some of which I've already, uh, communicated to Superintendent Gaul and Ms. Asavedo, but I want to make sure that the public also hears the feedback that was presented to me when I visited both the Fremont campus and the West Middle School campus. Uh, and, uh, as we go forth, uh, their voice should also be respected in this process as we consider relocating this program to Freedom and, um, uh, Holmes Middle School. First, uh, as far as the, um, uh, movement from Fremont to, um, uh, Freedom, um, I did have a conversation with Principal Squares and Assistant Principal Ramey. I think, uh, the, they understand the need to move this program, as you showed in that data, and if you can go back to that slide, Ms. Olson, um, uh, which showed the numbers, uh, at, uh, yeah, go one more slide. Yeah. Uh, you can see that the numbers have been pretty much around 45 students at Fremont over the last three years. Uh, and we heard from the GMP staff itself, they came and some of them talked about how invested they are in Fremont and how, um, you know, that when they share that, um, uh, their car is on auto drive to Fremont, uh, they've got considerable investment in Fremont, and their students have gone in there. But for the benefit of the program and the sustainability and the viability of the program, they can step back and say to keep this program intact, that the move to Freedom is the right thing to do. Uh, the feedback from Fremont, uh, that was provided to me was that as we go through this move, the school would, uh, um, consider, would request that the board and the superintendent consider, uh, branding opportunity for that school, what that school looks like going forth. I know that, um, uh, several of our schools recently had branding, so, but they are an instructional empowerment school, quality neighborhood school, so they would like that opportunity to engage with, uh, the outside firm that we hired for branding and marketing, and if we can provide that opportunity for them, this would help them, uh, go into the next school year with that opportunity to market their school out there.
Yeah, Tracy knows her team is on the schedule for this spring. We're considering moving it up, but we wanna make sure we get through this decision um, before we decide on the right time for that, but Fremont was already on the list for, uh, this spring for that revisioning work.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that feedback and consideration of their request. Um, now, moving on to West, uh, this is a more, um, uh, charged conversation. I spent six hours out there talking to various, uh, you know, staff members and students and, uh, parents out there too. Uh, you can see that, uh, their emotions are involved in it, and more so, it's not about the program moving there itself, but the question is, what happens to West at this point in time? Uh, what's the future for West out there? Um, and, um, the primary thing that I would share from my visit with them is that that building needs a leader, um, that clearly identified leader. For no fault of their own, the building lost its leader, which was communicated in the public comments too in the, uh, beginning of the year, and, uh, it was unanticipated. We can predict personal, uh, family issues that crop up. But, uh, the interim, uh, principal has done a tremendous job, but we need to clearly identify the Superintendent Gaul and his team clearly need to identify a building leader so that the culture and the morale in that building is directed by that building leader. So, uh, it's an opportunity where we can, um, respond to the feedback that that community has provided. And secondly is, if this program is going to be moved from West, what is the future identity of West? And I think that's in the process too. That was communicated to- That was communicated to us. But, you know, in response to their message to us, you know, I think we are going to go through that design thinking lab process for all of our middle school to identify what their pathway for that, um, uh, school exactly is going to be so that the, with the future leader and the pathway identified, we can clearly market their, um, uh, school and help them grow their enrollment in that school. Um, uh, what was brought up also was that, um, we need to consider investment in facilities. Uh, our students are direct and upfront and, uh, they pointed to me that, uh, that building would, uh, could use a facelift and a renovation. And that's something that, uh, the board should consider. That was one of the schools that was targeted for renovation with the 2022, I think, the MLO that failed by, yeah, the bond, um, the bond that failed by, um, handful of votes, by 11 votes. Uh, um, but now we did, you know, we got to figure out what that future, uh, for that building, uh, as far as investment in facilities to, uh, the students who are there behind, in the general education classrooms, they are behind academically. The teachers indicated that they need support to pull these kids up. They are doing remarkable work out there, but they may need some intervention support. And I think I communicated that to you, Ms. Azvedo. Um, and the GMP teacher, um, that are in that school also teach other elective classes. So they're worried as if that is going to be taken away, the GMP teachers are going to be taken away, that they need somebody to, um, teach that elective some, and a marketing support for that school overall. So those were some of the feedback that I gathered from them. Um, obviously, West wants that small, uh, school environment and it's a balance as to how small can we go and how feasible it is economically to sustain that school. That's the delicate balance that we are talking about. Um, it looks like, uh, over the last couple of years, uh, two years back, the numbers were closer to 30 and now it's roughly around 45 students out there. And there is an opportunity to grow this program at Holmes, uh, to a higher numbers, maybe, um, to the numbers that Saban has. Um, with that, I will open it up for board discussion. I provided my feedback from my visit and, um, Dr. Carey first.
Hi. Thank you for the amended presentation and the additional information. I do have some clarifying questions. Um, but I want to start, and I'm sorry about this again, two weeks in a row, getting on a soapbox again, because I, I do want to put my questions a little bit in context. Um, when we look at a programmatic change, I think it's worth noting that at least speaking just for myself as one board director, I'm wary of the board, for lack of a better word, kind of micromanaging programmatic decisions. You know, you're the one who's in charge of the program. You're the one who's kind of, you know, got the on the ground information, who has the data, who has the expertise. And so I do want to respect that. But as we've seen, you know, in the public comment and the myriad of emails that the board has got, this is a question that has really attracted, justifiably so, a lot of public interest on both sides. And so my prior, so to speak, is really to kind of sign off on what you want to do as the person who's directing the program. But I want to make sure that I understand the considerations. And by proxy, I want to make sure that the public understands kind of all the factors that are going in. Um, and a few things that I kind of noted, looking through all the emails and listening carefully to the public comment, I sadly was not able to go to the listening sessions because I had my own classes to teach and my own meetings to attend during that time. Um, it did stand out to me that, a few things. Number one, most of the people who are directly teaching in the program seemed very strongly in favor of the move. Um, most of the parents that I remember hearing public comment from and reading emails seemed in favor of the move. I think that's noteworthy. But I also know, and I wrote down his name, so I wouldn't forget it. Um, Anthony Kennedy, he was the one with the public comment where he had that really strong question about, okay, if you're taking this away from West, what are you going to do to replace it? I know this is not under your purview necessarily, and I don't have the context for what has happened to West historically, but I do think this is something that, you know, the superintendent and his team really needs to think about, that if this is being taken away from the school, what can we do to help support them? So, um, my soapbox done, at least for now. So my clarifying question is actually on this slide, because when I was looking at this slide over the weekend, I really wasn't sure what to take away from it. Because if I'm just looking at the numbers myself, it looks like the numbers are all kind of flat or even declining across the board in every school. And West actually has a place where, you know, in terms of the size of the people in the program, going from 30 in the 21 to 22 school year, you know, to 45, that's actually not a trivial increase, given the size of the program to begin with. And something you said when you were running through the slides kind of clarified at least a little bit of what you were maybe intending to show here, which is program capacity. So, could you speak a little bit, as I'm trying to interpret and understand these numbers, um, how do these relate to the program capacities? Does, does that question make sense?
Yeah, it does. Um, at a middle school level where we're teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we're teaching all four academic content areas, um, we really should at the very least be seeing 25 students per grade level. And we have been far from that number at West for a while. Um, and, and historically, six, seven years ago, we had, um, I, I believe if memory serves, um, closer to 80 students in the program. And so it was a robust program once upon a time. We had several families from our West Side schools choosing West as a great option for GMP. Um, they had strong relationships with the teachers that were either at their elementary schools or sharing with them that, um, that West was a great option to go to. And, and we've lost that continuity. We've lost that, um, that pathway, if you will, from the West Side schools to West Middle School in the GMP. And so when I see numbers that are coming in 45-ish and we're really needing 75-ish to make it viable, um, when I look at, um, the economics of it and, and supporting it with four core academic teachers plus a part-time gifted magnet coordinator, um, it just makes it really hard when we're slicing and dicing FTE all over the rest of the district to say, well, we're gonna serve, um, students in a quality neighborhood school with a point two FTE for a gifted resource teacher and, and we're shaving the support to, um, to other schools. And yet we have this huge investment at the GMP and it isn't serving as many students who have that unique need of, um, needing gifted academic services.
Emily, can you expand on the stacked way that we're at Saban and how you think that's where we can get to at Holmes? And then make a comparison on how you think elementary school is really single classes for each of the two elementary schools?
What we're hoping to do at Holmes is to really not just run one section of GMP like we're doing now at West. Um, we're really hoping to run two full sections within a fairly short amount of time. Part of that is because currently Holmes has about 90 students currently identified Tier Three and Talent Development gifted. Now, that doesn't mean that all of the Holmes kids are necessarily going to choose the GMP, nor does it mean that every gifted student, um, would necessarily, um, we would, we wouldn't look for Holmes to fill the GMP. We want students to choice in. We want students on the West Side to have a great middle school option with a vibrant community. And I believe that we can do that at Holmes, not only knowing that we already have a large population there. We've got a large population of our feeder schools on the West Side that have a lot of kids identified. And if they have a place where they want to go, um, I believe we can do it. And I don't think it'll take us that long to get there.
And for those who weren't at the listening sessions, we, we did kick both of those off for Fremont and West by announcing that we would hold their enrollment harmless for their budget for next year and that particularly at West where we have shared teachers taking on, um, uh, essential, uh, classes like PE and art, that we would backfill those. And so the, the, the message was if the decision is made and you lose the GMP population, you're not going to lose then the thing that they provided as well in that building. So we would do that for at least a year. Um, I think that's probably easy to do at West for two years since next year will be a new leader's first year. We don't normally make large programmatic changes on them at that time. And this is an unfortunate, um, timing issue for West. Uh, but I think when you look at the numbers coming out of COVID 2021, 2022, is when we as an administration should have been bringing this programmatic change because 28 students across three grade levels is clearly not an efficient and or an effective way to use that GMP staff.
So can I say back just some conclusions that I'm taking from your answers and just verify that I'm thinking about this correctly? So the takeaway from this data is less the trajectory than it is the total number of students. And in particular, it's not on this slide, it's on a different slide, but kind of that staff-student ratio, FTE, those kinds of numbers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So the concern is less the trajectory, the concern is the total utilization of the program, which has been stable over time. But at, um, sorry, can you go back to the numbers again?
Oh, sorry. I switched it to try to support where you're headed.
Okay. So the issue is less the trajectory, it's the utilization of the program, which at Stratton and Saban is close to capacity or at capacity. In Fremont and West, that's not the case. So that's the first takeaway. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And then one of the things, you know, that I've been trying to think about as I'm considering this issue is I really have a firm belief that the system needs to serve students, not the other way around. And so I want to reemphasize the transportation point that was brought up earlier. If someone qualifies for this program, regardless of where, you know, what neighborhood school they're slated for, they get transportation to the school where the program is housed. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And it does depend on where the students live as to which school they are transported to. And I've had conversations with transportation. We might, um, need to look at, now that we're considering moving to a school further north, exactly where that boundary is. Typically for the middle school students, um, it's the cross-section of Fillmore and Circle. That if students are east of that, they are transported to Saban. If students are west of that, they go to the West Side Middle School GMP. Um, the other piece that I have talked with GMP families about is that there are multiple places that, um, that there are bus stops, that families can take their students to bus stops and get bused to the GMP as well. And so it, it's a pretty well finely tuned system that transportation has. And yes, we have committed, it was several years ago, that the board, um, dedicated this option to provide, um, opportunities for students that might not otherwise have it.
And I'll just mention for the record, I have the relevant policy EEA-A-R pulled up and it goes into detail onto some of those programmatic specific things. Um, okay. So I, thanks for the explanation. Thanks for answering my questions. You know, I think just to kind of summarize my own feeling on it, I think the board needs to make a decision about what's going to be best for the students. But I also think, and this is related to this issue, that, you know, really in the very short term, I think it would behoove the superintendent and his team to really take a hard look at how to help West. Because that's, you know, most of what I was hearing in public comment against the move, I think boils down to, you know, the adverse impact it has on the staff at West and kind of, you know, they're, as a teacher myself, I think justifiably quite nervous about what this is going to do to them. And I know that's not your line of authority because you're running the program, gifted program, and you want to do what's best for students and so do I. But I think that's something, you know, that your team should be taking a look at in the near future. And I'll, I'll get off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. And I think Superintendent Gall addressed that to some extent by saying he's going to hold the staffing harmless for the next year and possibly two years. And, um, as West finds its identity and we, uh, go through that design thinking process to identify its future pathway. Dr. Bankus.
Thank you. Um, so my comments have, um, are on both sides. The both sides, before I go there, just full disclosure. Somebody who was, uh, earlier talking about the 1900s, well, I can relate. So I pulled up my notebook that I've had with pictures of little students, um, from the summer of 1990. So this was a pro, um, program development for a different district in El Paso County. And what we did was to be able to pull the current research at that time. And as I said at the work session, it was never my intent as a classroom teacher to divide up the fifth grade gifted kids. So you got two and you got three and you got one or two. The idea was to, to bring gifted kids together as a group or in a, a grouping so that they could get that synergy of working with one another and having the opportunity to be, um, supported so they can excel. So, and part of the work that, that I did led to the color, my induction into the Colorado Academy of Educators for the gifted, talented, and creative, again, in 1996. So this has been something that I've done for a while, considered for a while. And as I see the progression of what this proposal is, I see it's in the best interest of kids. I see it in the best interest of, and we've heard it at the public comments, to say that, um, some kids come with quirky personalities. And for their social, emotional growth, the opportunity for parents to learn why their kids are gifted and what that really means, and to have the understanding of the limitations of being gifted. You may be gifted in math, but you still need support in, in reading. And parents need that support as much as, um, as the kids do. And I think that we're really, we're going in the right direction. Let me also speak to the influence of the impact that it has on West Middle School. If this has been going on for, declining enrollment has been going on for a while. This is the opportunity to reinvent yourself. And I again look at our superintendent who, if you follow the work that he has done, when he says it, we get it done. And West will not be left behind. West will have a chance to rebuild with the input of the very passionate teachers. And I applaud you for being a passionate educator because that's what makes the difference for all of us. And yes, I do have kids who write back after they have gone through a fifth grade class with me, and I appreciate that. I think that this is the opportunity, instead of, instead of, um, delaying or, uh, leaving West unsupported, that this is the opportunity to grow it. And as we have seen in all the other supports that have been provided through the district, we have supported principals, we have provided professional development, we have added staff, we have hired professional tutors. And I would not think that, that West would be any different for all the supports that we have given any other area that need huge improvements. This is their chance. It's a wonderful school. It's a wonderful building. Parking is much better at other schools that I can mention in that neighborhood. Um, so they have the room to grow. They have the committed teachers who can form the climate of that building to bring in others who are, who are involved and energetic about a new look for, for West. I, I can understand the hesitation of folks who've been in the district, um, who look at that and say, well, other superintendents have said the same thing. But if you look at the performance of the superintendent that we have now, what we've said, we've done. And we've moved and we've listened and we incorporate what we hear. Nobody is going to be left behind. They're going to get, um, West will have full funding, which is hugely generous. And I think that the transportation issue, when I was in the other district, was also an issue. That has been solved and it will accommodate not only the gifted identified students, but their siblings. How wonderful. So that the siblings can see that the progress of their, uh, older brothers and sisters. I also think that the opportunity to open it to all students, sick, and we've said this before, success builds success. We will see more families saying, oh, my, my, my child was identified gifted. What does that mean? Because they don't come from a family that has, um, a lot of success or they come from a family that maybe doesn't feel included. And we heard that in public comment earlier today, um, from a mom. I think we build a community of pathways that have said, I'm talented in art, I'm gonna go there. I'm talented or I have an interest in language, I'm gonna go there. This is another opportunity. And again, I think that the number of students in a program to be able to build off of one another is excellent. One of the things that concerned me with the, um, comments in the listening session yesterday was, um, our gifted kids are the ones who, who are out for sports. Our kids, gifted kids are the ones who are, um, organizing the dances. Our gift, my thinking on that as I thought about it, and again, I have spent a great deal of my career in lower socioeconomic schools. I come out of East LA, blah, blah, blah. Um, but what I get out of that is by removing that top layer, which is something that somebody had said in an email, it gives an opportunity for the other kids to rise. It gives an opportunity for kids who It gives an opportunity for kids who, who say, well, I'm not as smart as that kid, so I'm not going to run for student council, or I'm not going to put myself out on a science project. And now they get to be the top. They get the opportunity and the resources and the passion that the teachers have had for making sure that they're giving the best program that they can give. So I am in support of this move. I think that this is an opportunity for West to reinvent itself, not as the school that has a GMP program, but as West Middle School, who we are and what we're about. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hayfley.
So I don't, I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. So we spent this last week hearing from both sides of this issue, teachers, parents, principals, community members. We all received a lot of emails from people. I talked to people one-on-one to get their individual views, I spoke to groups of people. One thing is for sure, people are passionate, excuse me, about their kids and what, what's in their best interest. And that was so refreshing to see and exciting at the same time. We went to the two schools that are at the center of this move, Fremont and West Middle. And even though there are many different opinions on the proposed move of the GMP from Fremont to Freedom and from West to Homes, again, it's very apparent that people in this district care about the kids, they care about the opportunities that are available to them. And they care about kids more than they care about their own conveniences and their own status. And that was, that was huge to hear. That, to me, speaks volumes about this district and just how committed we all are to the kids of D-11. Our teachers are passionate about those kids, not just academically, but for STUCO, for basketball, for sports, I mean, it's, it, the whole child, if you will. That being said, while I am inclined to think it is the, in the best interest of the students to move the GMP from, at both Fremont and West, I struggle with that a little bit because, and this isn't news to you, but communication from the district to staff and the community at large was lacking, and that was perceived to move very fast. But I'm glad that you guys heard that and took it to heart. I'm a big believer that people need to be heard when such a plan is progressing. Probably should have been voiced to staff well before it was. Being at both Fremont and West this past week, hearing from the staff at both places, I appreciated their time and their views very much. I'm a, I'm a teacher and a West Side teacher to boot. I got a lot of kids from West in my classes at Coronado, fantastic kids. So I understand how this policy is going to affect the classroom, I don't take it lightly. At the same time, I also know that D-11 can't do the things the way it's always been done. Changes need to be made to keep growing, to keep providing opportunities for kids, and I think people in education know that pretty well. I think that there are people who won't be happy with whatever decision is made about the GMP or even other issues that come up. But I think that we can all agree that we can't get complacent, and we can't get stagnant. Things move pretty fast in our society now, we have to not only keep up, but we need to lead. This district has to lead. Change is never easy, but it is necessary. And I do hope in the future that communication with our staff and the community improves. We can't spring things on people. But at the same time, we need to be forward-thinking when it comes to our students and how best we can serve them. It's time to move forward, and I'll echo what Dr. Bankus was, Director Bankus was saying. We have to reimagine and reinvent both Fremont and West, not just talk about it, action has to be taken. These schools are just as important to D-11 as other schools are. We owe that to the kids, we owe that to our staff, we owe that to our community. And I'll finish by saying, thank you for what y'all did. I'll finish by saying thanks to the Fremont staff, and I will finish by saying thank you to the West staff. Your, your comments did not go unheard. They're important, they're valid. And I, I get it. I was, I was a basketball coach, I was a STUCO sponsor, I sponsored clubs, I had a hard time saying no. I learned no is a complete sentence. And in order for me to be able to take care of my kids better, my students better, I had to take care of me, too. And so while, I don't, can I, can I speak freely?
Sure, the floor is yours.
May I? I, I apologize if my language offends, but this sucks. Thanks. I mean, all the way around, but the problem is, is that we have to do something, something has to happen. And District 11 has had a history, in my view, as a teacher, of pushing things aside, and well, we'll deal with it later, we'll, we'll be able to handle that better later. Well, later's now. And as, as much as it pains, we have to do things a little differently. That being said, I hate change personally. It's, it's hard, but as the older I get, I realize the more necessary it becomes. And I've also learned that when things change, and as much as some people don't, don't like that change, there are other opportunities that open up. So when things kind of close on one end, other things do open up. It may take some time, it may, the vision may not be there just yet, but at some point, that light comes on and, oh, there it is, now I get it. So I am, I am confident that that is going to happen, especially at West. And I want, I want to underline West as, as Dr. Carey did, because, man, those kids are great, and the staff there is, and all staff in, in education, but particularly, particularly West, I thoroughly appreciated the, the, the passion that they have for their kids. And I know it's difficult, but at the same time, I can see some really good things happening for other kids that, that will remain at West and programs that will still stay afloat. It may not look the way it has before, it could look even better. I'll just throw that out there. And with that, I'm, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you for your passionate comments out there, Vice President, Vice President Hayfley. Your points are well taken. I think Superintendent Gall even addressed it right at the very top of it, that communication going forth could look a little different. The board, through this process, has also provided Superintendent Gall the feedback that he doesn't need to come to the board first, he can go and, go and, you know, market or talk about these programs and program, programmatic changes that are happening with our communities and schools. And it's going to come in front of the board at some point in time, and which point in time we are going to give the guidance to the superintendent. So it doesn't need to come in front of us, and he's aware of that. And all that you are talking about, the staff at both the West and Fremont, it's well appreciated. In all my interactions with them, you can see their commitment and passion for their students. And to echo your language, this does suck. We are put in a difficult situation, but when we talk about, hey, pushing things to the back, some of these hard decisions have to be made because of the enrollment laws throughout the district. When you go back and look from 2018 to 2022, we ended up losing 5,000 students. And to a large extent, we haven't addressed that student loss in the budget because of the supports that we have got from federal COVID money. Unfortunately, that's all coming to an end at the end of this year. So going forth, our recurring money that we have in our part of money, it's going to be restricted. So we got to creatively support our staff. This board and superintendent has clearly indicated, we want the resources pushed closest to students in the classrooms, and that's supporting our staff closest to our students. We will continue to do that, but we got to identify the budget challenges that go with that. Director.
Thank you. First, I want to note, I also was able to join the Fremont staff, like Director Hayfley, and I know, you know, only two of us should be there because of open meetings laws, et cetera. And I want to, and also, West, I was at for a couple of hours yesterday myself. I want to acknowledge the many positive comments and support of the program, but also recognize and acknowledge the angst and despair that some people are feeling in speaking with students at West yesterday. They have their concerns as students, including the availability of, well, small class sizes, let's go there, because I want to talk about that slide. They're concerned about their safety, the West students at Homes. I, I realize some of us may have heard of concerns in the past about West, these students were concerned about Homes. It's kind of ironic to me having, you know, you hear rumors. And, and really what it tells me is, my takeaway is, the students in, in all of our schools are feeling pretty safe, and so that's encouraging. But those, I think, are concerns that your GMP students, our GMP students are going to have to have addressed. And perhaps some heavy, heavy marketing within our own GMP program if West is being moved, because some of those families and students are like, nah, I'm out of here. So we, we need to be aware of that. The access to the programs, the electives, I'm glad we will continue electives at the school, and a couple of years of that would be a really good idea, because that is impactful of every single student in that school. And the, the issue with the extracurriculars, we can't make up those students easily if your basketball team has, you know, six kids or however many, and more than half of them are not going to be there next year, that's a significant issue. So maybe we can address that with some creative thinking, Mountain Song is over there, Academy ACL is nearby, maybe they can have a, a team with all three schools. So that's something I'm hopeful, is that we can have a lot of creative conversations on how to address the needs of all of our students. So the class size question, if you can go back a couple of, yes, there, to the staffing and the, the numbers of students, actually, I need to go back one more, please. Thank you. So with students at West loving their small class sizes, and when I look here, how many, how many GMP classes do we have at Stratton?
We have three, third, fourth, and fifth grade.
Okay, so they're each just about 20, some kids.
Twenty-two, twenty-five students. We had a set of twins, like I said, a twins makes a difference when they come or go, but about 22, 25 students at Stratton in each class.
Okay. So, and that looks like it would be about the same at Saban?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I remember hearing the, the caps, but I just wanted to make sure when we, if there's 90 already at Homes and say, all of them opted into the GMP, and all of the students at West decided to come over, you, you have a lot of students there. Will West students be guaranteed a spot in the GMP program?
Absolutely. We are inviting every student in the GMP, either at West or Fremont, to join the possible new solution, and it's completely their choice. But they are welcome and transportation is provided.
All right. And another question for the staffing, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Director, I just wanted to add, this programming is unique to meet the needs of intensive level needs, also connected to what Director Bankus was saying, of specific subset of gifted students that need that level of intensity of programming. And so while we know that we're running in our current model about half-full within the programming, and we know we want to expand to the level it needs to, it, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a situation where we would ever have that level of programming for the entire gifted population, let's say, in a school.
Can you explain that a little bit differently by kind of the half of the half, the 15% to the 5%, and that we'll continue to provide gifted programming to all our gifted talented students, but the gifted magnet program is a subset of that, and how we go through that process?
Yeah. The, the, we know, and research is really clear, the levels of support that you have to provide students, and this is true with special populations in general, and also, you know, connected to our SCL conversation earlier, if we think about MTSS. But it's, it's like a triangle with percentages, right? The top tier, which is a smaller percentage of the overall gifted population, would need that level of intensity of support. And so we know we're not hitting that with the levels to which our programs are full right now. And so that, that level of intensity with all-day classrooms, the kind of programming instruction that Emily was talking about, if a gifted student doesn't need that level, you know, some gifted students, a good portion of gifted students can remain in whatever school that they choose to go to and receive services from the gifted resource teacher and have training with general educators and staff. So I hope that it helps explain it a little bit more. It's, it's not that that programming we would offer in every, you know, across and just expands what would only be for those, that number of kids. It, it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate to the services. I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Did that clarify?
That clarify? That's, that's fine answer, thank you. A follow-up to that would be, what is the staffing for GT then, that we will have if the program moves at West? Would it be .2 FTE?
We would keep the 4.5 FTE that's currently at West. We would maintain that, that staffing at Homes. And if we grow the program to where the label, the level that Saban is, Saban's running their GMP with seven FTE. And so I hope.
I think the question is, how many part-time GT teachers would be at West for students that didn't go to Homes?
Thank you, I, thank you, I appreciate that.
We're actually connecting, it's working, symbiotic.
Thank you. I, we have a staffing FTE allocation model that at middle school, we've got about 100 students per one FTE. And so if we have 50 students, that warrants a .5 FTE at middle school. And so, and we do not want any school to have less than a .4 FTE. And so not, not, knowing that our numbers at West would probably be a little bit smaller than what we would hope, I could anticipate a .4 FTE gifted resource teacher remaining at West. The question is going to be, who is that person? And, and I can't answer that tonight. We have staff members that have very strong relationships, not only with elementary students at West and Midland, but also at West Middle. And I, I want to make sure that we, we hold those relationships because they're important.
We will provide the adequate staff for the gifted talented students that choose to remain at West, as we do for all our schools for gifted talented program. And if that requires a different formula for us in the budget, one of the challenges we've looked at this year is that many of our, they're not part-time people, but they arrive part-time in the schools, they're full-time people. Several of them are ESSER-funded. That was a different topic that was ready to come to the board for conversation, but we thought we needed to get through this first. The priority of the district is to continue to fund fully our gifted talented and gifted magnet programs, even with the ESSER Cliff. That will require adjustments for us in the budget that we build and present to the board this year, but we're confident that we're able to absorb that portion of the ESSER Cliff with zero impact on the program itself.
Great. Okay, that's good news, thank you. All right, let me see what the last question I had here was. Okay, that's answered, that's answered. Oh, I just, I want to recognize the, the effort at West from 2021 to 22 to the next year. West had staffing issues with the GMP, and that is, for those who are new, that is part of the disruption of the numbers. And so they are working hard to make that comeback. So I'm sure that if it moves, that effort will continue, and of course, the and of course, they'll have the bonus ninety students at Holmes. But just one final comment. I do, like, has been commented on before. I do hope we will put a focus on these schools. I appreciate the design thinking efforts, strong leader comments. Certainly, these schools are deserving of that. These will be, this will be a huge impact on these schools, an impact enrollment, especially if you're taking out siblings, which, as a parent, I would want my kids to stick together at the same school if possible as well. And so, recognizing the concerns, but also some of the desire. I will say, this is probably one of the more difficult decisions, I think, we've had as a board. So, thank you.
Thank you. And what Director Ott talked about, when you look at that 2021, 22 year, when West had twenty-eight students at that time, that relates to certain decisions that were made at the building level and which resulted in three of their GMP staff all leaving the program at the same time, and which translated into the community deciding to respond back in pulling their kids away, because those staff were highly respected at that time. But those are the second and third order effects sometimes that we encounter, that the challenges facing out there at West.
Director Nelson?
How many days per week is a point-four FTE?
Two.
Okay. We were wondering. Thank you. I was going to speak to that same point, that previous leadership made decisions that impact the program. This is a conversation that's been happening for a couple of years now. The reality is, the school's at forty percent capacity, and so, we have some work to do there. And I just want to recognize the, the grieving that is, that is just part of this process and the sense of loss, and we don't take that lightly for that community. And my hope is that the focus can shift to being able to, that we will be able to serve more students. And rather than the alternative potentially of having to end the program and minimize the number of options that are out there. So, you know, the timing for making this decision now, while it might feel rushed, I think it is the right decision. I, I don't know that if this had been announced two months ago, if it would have made it any easier on anyone. And so, I recognize why administration, that you're coming to us now to try and hopefully start serving soon its students sooner by, you know, this next fall. And I recognize the pickle that you guys are in. I, I wasn't a part of the conversation last week. I might have been in a little bit different spot where some of my colleagues were in that, you know, it's kind of a chicken or egg thing. Do you bring it to the community when you don't know if the board is even supportive? Or do you bring it to the board first, and that's how the community finds out? So, I actually think you handled this really well. And, and, and I, I just want to recognize the pickle that you're in, and I think that how you did go about it was appropriate, and, and trying to get the timing to be basically at the same time. So, I think that was all I had. I just wanted to share a little, since I wasn't a part of the conversation last week. And just want to say that you guys are doing great work, and you're here to support the district. We're all here to support the students. It's, we trust, we have, we have to trust the guidance that we are receiving from our administration. And so, that's where I'm deferring to, to you all on this. And, you know, we have to make hard decisions when it comes to educating our students, which is our mission. We have to just think through, in principles, you know, how do we get our limited amount of resources to impact the greatest number of students? And often, that decision is difficult and sometimes unpopular, and, but we just have to make sure we're doing right by the kids. And I, I do believe that's what, what is happening here. And we, we will continue to figure out how we can support West and, and come alongside, and Fremont. You know, we, we had public comments tonight more geared around West that were disappointed in the possible move. I don't know that we had that flip side from Fremont. We had support for Fremont, the move away. But, you know, there, we will, we will rally and figure out how we can support students. That's really what it comes down to. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the takeaway from what you presented to me, Director Nelson, what you presented to the community out there, the limited number, amount of dollars that we have at this point in time, sometimes these are hard decisions. We want to keep class sizes as small as possible, but when we have a limited amount of dollars, then there is only so much we can do with that, and we got to figure out how we can keep our class sizes optimal. Support programs, keep schools open. I have publicly stated from the board dius that I do not want to be associated with closing of schools. I hear about all the, sometimes pushback that comes from the community as to, hey, you closed Wausen or this. We were not involved in it, those decisions. But the way I see it, when we close a school, we are shutting off that opportunity and hope for the children in that neighborhood. We may have to come to that hard decision at some point in time, but the hope is that if we keep increasing enrollment, this is the first year in over a decade that we added students to our enrollment list. Over ten years, we have been losing students steadily. First year, we added students. And with losing students comes hard budget decisions that, at this point in time, we are, have to contend. Director Carey?
I'll be very fast. I just want to echo what Director Ott said, that this is probably the most difficult decision the board has faced so far in my time here. And I really want to take a moment to just thank everyone who participated in helping us think through this issue. All the emails that we got, all the public comment we heard tonight, it was all on both sides. You know, it came from a place of really heartfelt passion and just clear, really thinking carefully through it. All the emails were very respectful, public comment was respectful. And I just, you know, for those of you who were able to stick around and listen to the discussion, in addition to making public comment, I just really want to thank you in a special way for just participating in the process of, you know, publicly elected decision-makers having to think through a hard issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments at this point in time, as you have heard, this is a robust conversation. The board doesn't take these decisions lightly. We look at all perspectives that were presented to us. So, thank you for all the feedback that you provided through the listening sessions, through the emails, and through the public comments. With that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion that was presented to the board was approved. Moving on to the non-action item on the agenda. We do have two charter school renewal applications in front of the board, and the first of which is Academy, ACL Academy for Advanced and Creative Learning Charter Renewal Application. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Gall and Heston.
Who will turn it right over to Dr. Mendelsberg, who I think will quickly turn it right over as well.
Noted. Good evening, Board. We do have here Teresa Brown, who is the Director of Academy ACL. You guys have received in the packet this weekend a, a packet that talks about our end-of-year kind of review for the school and things like that. Academy ACL is a high-performing school. We're very fortunate to have Teresa Brown here as the Director. She has a short PowerPoint presentation to share with you all, and then she'll be open to answer any questions that you may have. Okay?
Thank you. Hello, and good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate the chance to get to speak to all of you this evening, a few new faces. So, hello. So, we have been a partner with District 11 since 2010 and have enjoyed our time getting to know all of you and getting to be a partner with Emily Andrews and Mark Hess in getting to identify and get to know a number of our gifted students here in the district. Can I drive? Okay. Awesome. So, we are a K-8 gifted charter school here in District 11, and we have about two-hundred-and-eighty students. And we've ranged from about two-hundred-and-eighty to about two-hundred-and-ninety-six students in the last thirteen years. And I'm going to share just a few things. I put together just a few photos from the last few years. One of our taglines is guiding gifted learners in the Pike's Peak region, and that's just part of what we do. We are a free, open enrollment charter school, and so, not all of the students who come to us have been formally identified. However, they are still given all of the opportunities that formally identified students are given. We have students, our students are able to go to whatever level of math and language arts that they feel that they're ready for. And so, you may have a typical student who is ready for, they're a third grader, and they're ready for fourth-grade language arts, so they get to go there. You may have a mildly gifted student who is a third grader, and they're ready for fifth-grade language arts, so they get to go there. You may have a profoundly gifted student who is a fourth grader and ready for pre-algebra, and they get to go to that class. And so, because of that, our students get to move about the building, getting the level of challenge and the level of support that they need. We have multi-age classrooms, which is a very interesting thing to view when you have a young one, like the one pictured, who is clearly very much younger than the other students in the classroom. But they get the opportunity to be mentored by older students, and they're with their idea mates, not necessarily their age mates. It's just a really cool thing to be able to see and witness. We get to work with community members like Concrete Couch. We've had the opportunity to create a Rubik's Cube out front, which was a tile work experience. And the, all, the kids got to create all of the tiles and work with Concrete Couch to make that dream come true for them, because lord knows, we are all about the, the Rubik's Cube right now. It's a thing. It's a little bit of an obsession. This last, this fall, we were able to create, well, recreate a labyrinth using Concrete Couch as our mentors. And the kids did all of the building, they did all of the creation, came out of their ideation process. They went through the design thinking process, and it turned out great, and the kids love it. So, we encourage writers, thinkers, engineers, artists, and advocates. The book, The Decade Long War, was written and by one of our students. They are a nine-year-old student, a fourth grader, who's currently working above-grade level in a sixth-grade language arts class. This is an eighty-seven, I'm sorry, I misspoke, an eighty-nine-page novella. And in the acknowledgements, they wrote, "I want to thank my teacher, Mr. Henry, for giving me the inspiration for this project, and my parents for supporting me while I worked on it. I am also grateful to my art of language teacher and homeroom teacher, also Mr. Henry, for teaching me all of the knowledge that I needed to create this novella and my school, which lets me be challenged, and without it, I would not have the knowledge I needed to create this novella." The story itself is set in 1256, right in the middle of the Middle Ages, which happens to be the, the time period in which Division III students study history for two years. And so, all of this, all of the knowledge that she gained the last year and a half was put into the creation of her book. And so, it's been a lovely thing to spend my, my Christmas break reading. For encore and enrichment, we have things like art, theater, physical education, Spanish, music, handbells, technology. We also have a taiko drum group choir. We had a theater performance, and after long last, and various bouts of illness, finally had our Scrooge's Christmas performance occur last Friday. It turned out wonderful. Students who would not be typical theater kids came out and auditioned, learned their lines, and did a wonderful performance for family and friends. And it was really nice to see kids who don't typically subscribe to being that theater kid go out and do something completely different. It was just, it was fantastic to see. We have both boys' and girls' basketball and a girls' volleyball team, both of whom are doing very well this year. And we have a robotics team, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we competed in best robotics this year. And our VEX Robotics team competed. We are grades five through eight, competing in both against middle schools and high schools. And we'll be heading to state the first weekend in March. We are, I think, eighteenth in state right now. And we also have world ranking. And so, we're really, really excited for the kids. From an acad, purely academic standpoint, we have consistently had solid academics. We use the integrated curriculum model, which is designed for gifted students, and it involves, it involves the, big ideas and generalizations, and discussing that in addition to giving kids choice in process and product, and advanced content. And so, allowing kids the opportunity to explore ideas at the level at which they're ready, which then allows us to push kids as quickly and into ideas and content that they're ready for. Our improvement plan is, we decided this year that we were going to just continue what we did last year. Kids still needed to improve in their writing, and we've been able to isolate it to short, constructed response, which is huge. We can write a novella, but simply responding to a question in a very simple way without overcomplicating it was still an area of growth for us. So, we anticipate being able to see that growth this year on CMAS. From a social-emotional standpoint, still being able to work within a team and engage with one another respectfully. These are, you know, areas of growth that all kids need. And we've seen great improvement in teamwork and working together. We are looking very much forward to seeing growth in our kids who have been formally identified and gifted with, in gifted areas in CMAS, seeing particular growth for them. And we just started a math curriculum this year, Reveal Math, and so, we're really looking forward to seeing how our math scores will improve. As I said, as I mentioned earlier, we have two-hundred-and-eighty students who are currently enrolled. We have twenty, I should say, twenty-three percent of our students currently are formally identified. That's about sixty-seven kids. Typically, by the end of the school, or school year, we have about fifty percent of our students formally identified. We have about ten to fifteen percent of our students in process, whether it be paperwork, or we're just waiting on particular testing data to come back. They're just waiting for identification. Through the MTSS process, we have about ten to fifteen percent, ten, fif, I'm sorry, ten to twenty-five percent more. Fifty percent of those that are already identified are somewhere within talent identification in one or more areas. So, for instance, if they already have a math identification, we may just be waiting for some additional data in reading or in leadership or creative or productive thinking. Three percent of our students, probably a few more, are already looking for talent identification, and that's even before the universal screening data's come back. We have seventeen talent identification Pike's Peak students who will be attending TIP here over the next couple of weeks. And those are in art, theater, vocal and instrumental music, and those are in grades six through eight. And we have several others that are waiting in the wings in kindergarten through fifth grade. So, we're very excited for that. And our students, oh, I apologize. I was ahead of myself. We have a large number of families who have joined us from outside of the district. These are quotes from families who have joined us on tours. These are quotes from families who have joined us on tours within just the last couple of months. Some, a couple of them are from pre-kindergarten families who are choosing to join us. They've submitted requests for enrollment, and some are from middle school families. Overwhelmingly, families are thrilled that they have found our school, that they have found our program, and that we are offering something different and we're offering something that no one else has, gifted all day, every day. And that's what we're able to offer our kids. That idea of giving kids an academic home, somewhere where they can thrive. And that says, it says a lot, and our kids say that this is their academic home. We've had a number of our, our students come back to visit, and I met with one of them over winter break. They are going to Hastings College in Arkansas, and they're an education major, English major. And he, and he said, "What do I need to do to be a teacher and come back here and teach?" And I said, "Well, graduate first and then let's have a conversation, honey." So, they want to come back and they want to be, still be here, be a part of us, be a part of our family. Our kids created a three-minute little fifteen-second video, and hopefully it'll play. Maybe? Oh, please play, it's very cute. Ah, there we go.
Never felt like I could be myself in a traditional school.
Long. Academy for Advanced Creative Learning, gifted all day, every day. So, that's us. So, again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share us with you this evening. And we look forward to continuing to be a part of District eleven and our partnership with you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Is there anything else that you need to add, Dr. Mendelsburg, from your side?
Just if there's any questions.
Okay, and I will come to that. I know that your team itself, the district team evaluated the application that was presented, this renewal application. Did anything show up in that applica- in that review, review, review process that you took? Is there anything that we should be aware of at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Director Jorgensen.
I beat you. By a split second. Thank you for that presentation. I really enjoy your school, and I haven't been for a visit in a while, with the tour with Nikki there. But there's something special about that school. And, you know, the K eight offering, when I had been there, when I was there last time, I mean, you have parents driving from like Calhoun to come bring their kids to the school. So, it has a unique benefit. I mean, your, your academics is just fabulous. You've got engaged learners, the integrated curriculum model is awesome. I'd be interested to know about how the Reveal Math is going to go for you. If that's something you can just earmark and email me, you know, directly just for a Director Jorgensen kind of information, that'd be great. But otherwise, just, I wish I could approve it, you know, fifteen years. But, you know, you never know what leadership does and how things change, but right now, you guys are on an awesome trajectory, so you have my full support.
Thank you very much.
Director Nelson.
I just wanted to touch on that. I, I didn't comment earlier about school choice and the impact that you all have, because we aren't actually voting on you tonight. But just recognizing that you are serving families, families are choosing to attend your schools and just the value that you bring to our community and the amazing programs that you have. So, thank you for presenting and to the future presentation. Thank you. And look forward to voting on this in the near future.
Thanks so much.
Director Art.
Thank you. Question for Dr. Mendelsburg. Did you, so the, the question was about earlier, the review of the district. So, is that the executive summary or was there a separate document?
No, there's an executive, the executive summary.
Okay, that was it.
I just couldn't get the words executive summary out.
That's okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. You said your enrollment is about two hundred and eighty students right now? Is that your capacity or can you add more students out there?
Oh, we can definitely add more students. We've had as many as about two hundred and ninety-six, we can probably go as many as three fifteen.
Three fifteen, so maybe about-
And that would be stuffed.
Yeah, maybe about twenty to thirty more students is all that you can add. Just to have an idea. And then there was some construction going on, I think it was similar to certificates of participation, where you invested your facilities money and did some renovation. Am I correct? Correct me if I'm, you know, mistaken or wrong. Is that all complete?
Yep, so we had a ten-point-seven million-dollar renovation that has been so very helpful. And so, we have a big, beautiful gym that we can now have actual sports in. And we've been doing some renovation outside, some beautification, which has been great. The kids are really loving natural playground, and we've got a fairly, fairly large interior space. We've been able to add some classrooms, which has been great.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have proven over the years, when did you start this program?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, and I think Director Art served on your board too, so she's got some connections. But you have shown that you can be successful in opening a school from scratch and providing a service that our community needs. Students that are identified, that want that type, you know, acceptance, and they can fit into that school and they don't fit into a traditional school. And you can provide that support and services out there, and you've been successful. You are thriving academically, you are financially sound. The building is in good condition and you've got a stable board, you are engaging with the community. So, you know, you are a model school that is out there so for others to emulate and provide that type of support. So, that's why you have parents choosing into that school from outside the school district too. So, thank you for what you are providing. Boat, if you have any follow-up question, this will come two weeks' time as an action item before, in middle, middle of February, as an action item for the board approval. In the meantime, if you have any questions, reach out to Dr. Mendelsburg, reach out to Superintendent Gall, and he will direct that information to the concerned person. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is again a charter school review application, but this time it is for Roosevelt Charter Academy. And Dr. Mendelsburg and Superintendent Gall?
I'll give it right back to Scott, but I will acknowledge that I jokingly said I'll see you at ten fifteen. And so, I was a little off, nine thirty.
Thank you again. Wanted to talk a little bit more about Roosevelt, because there's a little bit of a differentiation between them and Academy ACL as it relates to this process. Again, you got the executive summary over the weekend. I do want to introduce Holly Cameron, who's the Assistant Principal, and Matthew Cleland, who's the Dean of Students. Their principal, Kate Boyce, is unfortunately out of town dealing with some family issues. And so, Holly and Matthew will be here to deliver their PowerPoint, which will, because they came up on performance review from the SPF from the state, we wanted to do a little bit more review. So, as part of those conversations, their PowerPoint will be a little bit more like the UCIPS that you've seen in some of the other schools in D eleven in the past. So, want to turn this over to Holly and Matthew for the next part of this presentation.
Thank you so much for having us here. We know it is late, but we really appreciate the time that you are giving us this evening. As you can see on the screen, that is our mission and vision, and due to time, I will not read it to you. So, we will just go ahead and get started. Roosevelt Charter Academy is a neighborhood charter school that has served for, served the community for twenty-seven years as a charter. Currently, we have an enrollment of five hundred and eight students. We have a staff that deeply, deeply cares for our students as a whole child, as you can see through our programming that we do. They do a lot of working together to plan instruction, to increase achievement. They support the vision by offering the different programs and continuing to add new things to that. Project-based learning, our academy program. Roosevelt Charter Academy is an exclusive school, school community that appreciates and is responsive to the diverse needs of the entire student body, which is indicated with our life skills program that we do have at the school and our multilinguistic program.
It's always great to hear other speakers talking to the district about educating the whole child, because it's, I'm so sorry. It's great to hear other speakers talking to you guys about educating the whole child, because we take that model, looking at our students here at Roosevelt. So, we've just got some fun pictures up here. But we're really proud of the programming that we provide our students, who sometimes don't have access to those things. We know that traditionally, about eighty to ninety percent of our student body qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And about sixty-five percent of our families speak a language other than English as their primary language at home, which far outpaces other schools in the district. So, we do fill that niche there, and we provide a strong STEM program where students get science and experimental science in their classroom with their homeroom teachers. And as a special outside of that, in programming through our special ed programming and gifted programming, we have a lot of technology and like three D printers that we're excited to be integrating this year. We've had awesome turnout in our family nights the past few years, I think averaging-
Four hundred in attendance each month?
Four hundred in attendance each month. We have a family night tomorrow night. Our families will be doing great science experiments with their kids, it'll be super cute, come on by. We are also a recipient of the Twenty First Century Grant, so we have after-school programming that currently is serving about twenty-five percent of students every single day with academic support, like homework club and tutoring, but also with great opportunities that they don't always get. Bike club, band, dance, Lego club, soccer. We've got awesome stuff for our kids, so we're really excited about what we can do for them.
So, as stated, we are here to talk about our school performance framework. We are in improvement status for the year 2023. We are only point seven percent away from being improvement and eleven point seven away from performance. Looking at that chart, we do see, we are approaching in both academic achievement and growth, but yet we are at meets with our participation with no indicators of the do-not-meet. In reviewing the school performance framework for the last six years, in 2017, we did go into an improvement plan. In that particular year, we did have a new administrator. No, it was not a new administrator, I apologize, that was later. We separated from our consulting firm with Edison Learning, which meant we ended up taking over our own operations at that point, so it was a completely different structure. We have identified causes and action steps for our status of priority improvement plan for this year.
To give you some background, we adopted STAR assessments the year before districted, so we do have some historical data we can share with you there. You'll see the first three bars are two years ago, the school year twenty-two, and then the second three are last year. And you can see the, the benchmark growth at each of those data points. But we do still see that, that high-risk population that we serve and the impacts that that has. So, that's our STAR reading data specifically, and that shows an aggregate scaled score that STAR uses internally for achievement across the school. So, we, we do see a positive trend, but it's not the achievement that we want from our kids, so we are addressing that. This is our math, and you'll see the same positive growth trend in math, as well as a stronger math proficiency across the school. We did, we were awarded, along with another D eleven school, only twelve schools in the state got awarded that governor's math award for growth during the COVID time. So, we are proud to be able to serve our kids, especially kids who aren't accessing English as a language, but can access those math concepts really well. So, we're pretty proud of that overall. And that's the same information for that math scaled score independent to STAR.
So, with our CMASS ELA, we have, we are looking at the subgroups. We want to pay special attention to the number of students that are tested. As we look, for instance, in that red column, we see that the subgroup of students with disabilities in every grade level has a high percentage. However, if you do look at the number of students that are tested, only six were tested in that subcategory for third grade, nine for fourth grade, and five for fifth grade, which shows us that the number of participants does impact that ratio. Another example of that is looking in fifth grade in the blue column, so high achieving. It does say that our African-American subgroup had fourteen percent there, but again, only seven students tested at that level. So, the ratios are more variable due to the small number of participants, so we wanted to point that out. We do usually perform much better in math than we do ELA, and that, we saw that with the STAR data, and we're also, that's been very consistent with our CMASS data. I would like to, again, looking at those number of students tested, comparing to those percentages to get those variable ratios. But I do want to point out, in each of those categories, our subgroup, students with limited English proficiency have lower percentages across the board in all those categories, which definitely demonstrates the effectiveness of the commitment we have of meeting the diverse needs of our multilingual learners. Looking at our past five years' data on the Five Essentials survey, we do see that in twenty, the school year 2021, 22, there was no, we did not have sufficient data to present. In that year, that is the year we had a change in an administrator. We also identified barriers of our parents being able to access the survey, whether it was due to their work schedules, language barriers, and not understanding exactly what it meant and the importance of it, even having access to the technology, which we have now implemented strategies to meet that barrier, which includes, we offer several devices at each of our monthly parent nights for parents to come in and they get to sit and do it right there on our own devices. We do have translators available for questions or to emphasize the importance of their input, as well as printing out QR codes for them to easily access the tech, the survey from their phones.
So, these are two of the most impactful barriers that we've identified for getting the, the growth in achievement that we want to see with our kiddos. And they're both related to turnover and mobility. So, historically, a high family mobility really impacts our population. I know we have our ad drop list that comes out every single day, so we have daily changes at our school. And that language barrier as well. But we have a lot of things in place to address that, including this year, a new, we were awarded the School Health Professionals Grant, which has allowed us to extend, we now have a team of two full-time social workers, a full-time psych and a full-time school nurse to really connect our families with resources and provide support to kids in the school. We have adopted and done some teacher reviews of curriculum in the last few years that have really targeted like what our population needs in terms of access to curriculum. And they're all really tailored to providing that content support, even through translation, so we're pretty proud of that. But one of the things that isn't historically, like, we don't have a pattern as, of, has been the, the changes in school administration, especially the last few years, and then the normal turnover that we know all schools saw during that COVID time. So, it does start at the top with principles and how we support teachers. And so, if that, if there's a lot of turnover and instability there, we know that we can't support teachers to support students. But luckily now, we have a great, pretty solid admin team with a lot of expertise who can really help support expert teachers, support kids, which goes into some of our further steps. We're really building out our professional development to hit the deficits that we know are there. All of our staff are trained above and beyond the Colorado REED Act requirements with Oregon Gillingham training and other things, which is great. We have super highly qualified teachers teaching literacy, so we know we're going to see those impacts. We have a great MTSS model that we're building out to meet the needs of all students. And we're really building that in to our- And we're really building that in to our professional learning communities. So weekly, our teaching learning coach Melissa, who's back there, meets with our teachers to really guide that data-driven discussion and make sure that we're identifying what kids need so that we can be responsive. And that really is our instructional model. We don't have a specific pedagogy or program that we use. We're here to empower teachers to empower kids. And that starts with identifying needs at the extremes and building a continuum of supports to meet the needs of all learners and to recognize that we do have exceptional children who are, have, like, we were talking earlier, areas of strength in one's realm of academic achievement and areas of weakness. And so we can identify those independently and meet those needs. We're proud of our coaching model that we're implementing because it really is that co-plan and co-teach, working with teachers to meet the needs of their kids.
This is my favorite part of tonight's presentation. So you're going to hear it, you're going to see it, I just want you to, I'm warning you. One thing that we do at Roosevelt Charter Academy is we do survey our staff, our students, and parents to monitor our continuous improvement of the school's, school's culture and climate. And so when we look at those graphs right there, I wanted to point out that the fours are strongly agree and one is strongly disagree. And in that first one, we have a very overwhelming response of ninety-two of the respondents saying they are happy to work at Roosevelt Charter Academy. We look at the other four, we have about an average of seventy-five percent satisfaction in that our staff shares the investment of our mission and vision. They agree that Roosevelt has effective approaches, 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 there we go, in place to meet the needs of our multilingualistic learners, our students with special needs, as well as needs of our gifted and talented students. Working with a principal and staff is always a big part of our climate and culture in any school. And so eighty percent, the average of eighty percent over those four, the staff felt that the principal does promote a positive school environment, promotes the success of all students, communicates effectively with all school stakeholders, and has a good working relationship with the staff. Here, very excited for this. Our parents have shared with an overwhelming eighty-five to ninety percent satisfaction that their child feels safe at Roosevelt Charter Academy, their child feels successful at our school, their child has a friend at our school, and that their child is respected by our teaching, teachers and staff. And ninety-seven percent of our parents feel welcomed when they come into Roosevelt. They enjoy coming to our building, which contributes to our high participation in our parent-teacher conferences and our monthly parent nights where we talked about, we had an average of four hundred in attendance each month. So on behalf of our principal Kate Boyce and our entire Roosevelt Charter Academy school community, we really thank you for this opportunity to be able to share with you and provide additional information for you as you consider our renewal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Pankas.
The last time I visited Roosevelt Elementary Academy, there was a concern about the neighborhood changing over and that it would be more difficult to attract students. And so to attract five hundred and eight students, you should be applauded for what you've done to reach out to the environment, the community there, to get the kids in and to get the participation from the parents that you have. The results that you just showed with the change in principals, I, there was a frequent change of principals, is that right? So that last, one of those graphs about the principal promoting a positive environment, was that for one year or last year?
That was for, that was last year's survey result.
Oh, that's, yes.
So that is our current principal now, yes.
Speaks volumes for what you're doing there, that's right. And to have the, so many students who do not have English as their primary language, it really speaks to the devotion and the commitment and the dedication of all of you to make sure that everyone feels welcome. And one of the things I remember from years past is when I, a parent had told me, I believe she was Native American, had said, when I walk through the, when I walk through the halls of the school, I hear the echoes of my feet and, or footsteps. And you have turned that around tremendously. So again, I'm looking for wonderful scores coming out. I'm looking for a continuation of attracting the children in your neighborhood. And thank you all, thank the staff for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Dr. Nelson.
Can you repeat the numbers that you had on the FRL and ELL? I just didn't capture what percentage your school.
So historically, we have an eighty to ninety percent free and reduced lunch rate. I'm not sure where it came in this year, but I know district is probably having the same difficulty with free lunch for everyone of why parents need to do that. And then about sixty-five percent of our families come from non-English speaking backgrounds, with about forty-five percent qualifying for LEP and NEP services.
And then I wanted to follow up on your Orton-Gillingham training, when did you start that?
I believe my first year, so about four years, no, maybe a little bit before that.
I think it was right be, right after the COVID. I think that was a big push after the COVID.
And this is just for my own knowledge, is, I referenced that naming convention for dyslexia, but is it not just dyslexia focused?
It's not a dyslexia-specific intervention. It's a multi-sensory, like, just like, it, it's a phonics intervention, morphology intervention. So we train all of our homeroom teachers. Our K two get the, the comprehensive phonics and phonemic awareness intervention. And our three-five get morphology and syntax. And then our interventionists all get it. And then any of our other teaching staff who are interested is eligible to do that as well.
I, I just, since ELA is more where you're weak, hopefully you'll start to see the impact of turning that around.
We also train all of our interventionists in Wilson and ninety-five percent in other intervention programs. So we have a, we didn't really talk a lot about our academies, but because of our extended school day, all students get their ninety-minute ELA block and another hour of academic intervention. So every kid gets their grade-level instruction because even if a language skill is weak, they're still have the, the brain of a third grader. So we still have to serve that. And then they get that specific skills instruction after that. So in our grades three through five, we have a great academy program where if kids need to go all the way down and focus on those phonics skills, that's where they go in small groups to do that. And then we have like a scaffolded supports all the way up through comprehension and then pass that into project-based learning that services like our gifted students and our talent development students. So we're really proud of the continuum of supports that we have for our kids.
Great. And what is the length of your school day? You said it's.
We start at seven twenty-five and end at three thirty.
Oh, okay.
With a, yeah, it's, it's a long day. But we do an early release on Fridays for students, which builds in PD time every week for staff.
But one thing I want to point out too is we do have an eight-hour day. But we offer that one hour after school for those enrichments, for, to kids to part, for the students to participate in activities. They would normally have to pay outside services, so it's a free service to them. We have overwhelming, we can only support twenty-five to our, to our staffing, but we easily get fifty percent requests to be in a club. So we're trying to expand that even further to accommodate that. Because the parents need that, the kids love our school and want to be there. So a nine-hour day for a lot of our students, which I think is wonderful that they, and they're great. They're just like, it's next morning, they're raring to go, so.
I'm sure the families appreciate the flexibility, like, the working parents, yeah. Well, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Dr. Rod.
Thank you. Can you, the application or the renewal information mentions plans for a possible addition of middle school. Can you elaborate on that and also then separately preschool?
Yeah, I can give some details and Holly can probably give more. But we know, and we've talked with Dr. Mendelssohn, when we lose kids, it's because we're losing siblings. We lose a fifth grader who goes on either to a district school, but more often than not, we lose them to a K eight or K twelve charter. So we know that that's the, the need in our community where if that fifth grader leaves us, all of the siblings leave us. And so there's interest from our community to do that. So we're excited to partner with the district to see how that would look. So we know that would be a school of choice that would operate different from the way that our elementary does. But the community need is there, and we're here to partner with you to meet that need. And then it's the exact same thing for preschool. We get requests every single year to have preschool from our families. So we know that that's an overwhelming need, so we're excited to start that process too.
Okay. I just, for my fellow board members, I'll note it's like three-tenths of a mile away from Jack Swiger. So just for our own application there.
And I would like, can I address that? Because one thing we want, when we are making our proposal for an expansion to a K eight or pre-K eight school, we know Jack Swiger is right across the, so that would not be the way our elementary set up with the neighborhood school and taking permits. That would be very much a choice. And we would cap it at a certain number for our sixth, seventh, and eighth so that it would not have as big of an impact possibly for the district school. That's why we want to work very closely with the district and with you on how we can make that work for everybody in the community.
Okay, and is, so is that in your next, that's in your next five years as part of your plan?
We're trying. That is our goal. Understanding too that there's a lot that needs to go, needs to be discussed and negotiated.
Okay. And I'm just curious about the, the room you have within the school then as well. You have the classrooms and you have the budget and.
So right now, we have like the ability to house small, small programs on either side, moving into pre-K or sixth grade right away. But we would probably pursue expanding the school to meet the need based on, again, the community's needs and the district's needs. But we're really interested in retaining the students that we know we're losing to San Creek, which is K eight close to us, to Atlas. We lose kids to them most often. And James or some other expansive charter schools.
Do you know what the, the number is that, I, I guess I'd be curious just to see those numbers. How many, where your, where your fifth graders go to which middle schools and how many of them go into a D eleven school? And it's really just a curiosity that I would have, not decision-making necessarily either way, but assume you keep those numbers.
Yeah, and that's what has sort of spurred this discussion is we're seeing those trends as fifth graders lead us and then as their siblings go too.
That makes perfect sense, thank you.
A lot of our families want their, their children to stay in a charter setting, which is why we do lose them to Atlas or over to that international school over in D two across the street. So that's why we were wanting to, and we want to keep our families.
Oh, of course, yes. And the preschool, I think that's certainly a demand across the city. And, and we supported preschool within schools as well, so that makes sense. So I, I guess just as part of all of that, knowing that you're thinking about the budget and of course in conversations with the district. And as I looked at the budget, the other question I had was, and so I'll probably send this to you all, was about the budget for substitutes and temps. It looked like it was a zero-dollar item, so that can happen offline unless you know something off the top of your head.
And truly, I would not be able to answer that now.
Understandable.
We will get that information to you, I promise.
I'll, I'll send a note.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from board members, couple of questions from me. How many students, you said approximately five hundred students that you have, how many of them come from district eleven schools and how many choice into, from outside district eleven?
So a majority of them are in neighborhood, which is within district eleven. But we do choice in, I was actually kind of surprised by the number, I don't know the exact number, from other D eleven schools that do come in.
Okay, do you get.
Yeah, but we can get that.
Do you get students from outside D eleven? D forty-nine and other school districts?
Yeah, and so like, we do have a family that travels from Calhan. We do have, yeah, we were like, oh, that's us too. But you know what, also out at the Elka area, just all over Fountain, we have a lot of people coming up from Fountain, a lot of students.
Okay. And then looking at the data that you presented to the board, you went into twenty twenty-one, twenty-two data and twenty-two, twenty-three data. Do you have anything twenty-three, twenty-four data from the beginning of the year to middle of the year that we looked at internally for D eleven schools?
We just briefed our mid-year data.
Yeah, mid-year data that shows that you are trending in the right direction based on the USIP that you have identified root causes and action steps. Do you have any data that you can present us, this year data?
We, we do have data, I don't have it with me now. We are seeing a word trend, we have seen growth. We have several grade levels that have shown, have made the projected half-years growth from beginning to middle. We do have some teachers in particular that have almost even gotten to a full-years growth at this point in the year. So looking, as we've been doing our mid-year reviews, looking at those different datas with individual, individual teachers and with grade-level teams, we are seeing growth happening. We, we really focus on the growth because we have so many holes. But so we would love to see a two-to-three-year growth so our achievement continues to go higher, right? So we push for that year-and-a-half growth every year to get our percentages for achievement higher. So we're on the right path, we are making improvements, we can definitely get you those hard numbers.
Great. If you can just send that data through Dr. Mendelsburg.
Absolutely.
The beginning of the year, mid-year data for this, just to show the same type of bar graph that you have identified, red, yellow, blue, and green. What does that show from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year?
We will get that to them right away.
Okay. And then with your root causes that you identified, one of, one of that was your school administration turning over quite a bit with your school principal, the principal that you have right now, Ms. Boyce. I think she's been there for a while now, hasn't she?
This is her second year as principal, and she was a dean of students prior to that for one year.
So I think I visited with you and talked with you the last time I was there, I was in your office. Isn't that, that was about a year or so back? Okay, you, you looked really familiar to me, so that was, yeah. You know, I'm glad, hopefully we can get that, some stability in that building leadership out there. We, as a school district, have really emphasized the importance of student academic growth and achievement. And I know that you are dealing with English language learners, so your focus is more on the growth. But that is essentially our focus internally in all D eleven schools. And I'm providing that same feedback to you that as we look at the data that is coming in front of us, we want to move all our schools that have been identified as priority improvement higher up. So that's the same feedback that it is essential that you as a school district work internally with your board and your administration in moving your school district in the right direction. You are providing a service that is invaluable to the community out there. It looks like you have a significant demographic of Hispanic-speaking population that are in D schools. But we just wanted to make sure that those students are also academically thriving.
Yes.
That's the goal. Okay. The last thing, the executive summary, I think that's put together by Scott Mendelsburg. Is that summary, is it, you know?
Yeah, it's put together by myself and Tom Weston, who is our liaison, our charter liaison.
Okay.
You're getting ready to make a joke about this, aren't you?
No, I'm just going to read the summary, the last line of the executive summary. And it says, they also noted that areas superintendent Mendelsburg is always available and has been very supportive.
So. Yeah, I put that in myself, I don't know, I put a lot of those in, you guys never catch it. But yeah, I like to do that, just for fun.
Well, you got to give a shout-out to yourself in the summary here, the report that you put together. So, but thank you, thank you for the feedback and, you know, we're looking forward to that data. Again, I will stress that, I mean, I think you added a wing to, didn't you, like new construction that you added? So you do have room out there if necessary. And your financial numbers and everything look solid going forward? Okay, okay. Anything you needed to add, Dr. Mendelsburg, in your review of?
No, I, I just want to, I just want to reemphasize, I don't, I think they were a little humble about, I mean, they got a governor's award, so the governor came down and, and talked to them about their science. And I think math and science for what their clientele is just, it's a little bit more representative. But I think you're exactly right, and, and, you know, with my boss and the superintendent, how he talks about achievement is first. And so they know what their gaps are, they're working towards them, the strategies all make sense. The other couple legs to that stool are, they're filling a niche. I honestly believe, especially with some of the, you know, the trends in this district right now with more second language learners, capturing this group and figuring out how to keep this group engaged in D eleven is going to be an important piece to us. And I think we can learn from each other on some of the, the challenges of teaching second language learners. But, and so they are fulfilling the niche, the achievement needs to. But, and so, they are fulfilling the niche, the achievement needs to absolutely get there. And they know that, and I think the strategies they're implying are, employing are the right ones. The third one is enrollment, and their enrollment continues to grow in some troubled times in that, in that area. So, I think that two of the three parts of the stool are very strong. And I think the strategies they're using for the third part are, we're going to see positive impact.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board, again, the same applies to the school too. If you have any comments directed to Superintendent Gall and Dr. Mendelsburg, and you will have it ready, February 14th is when this will come as an action item in front of the board. And if Principal Boyce is available at that time, she can certainly join us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are at the end of non-action. Future agenda item tasks, board members, any request? Dr. Carey.
Thank you. I still don't feel like I understand the procedure for throwing out completely new ideas. So, I don't know if this is something to be tackled at the retreat next week or a future work session. But one of the things that I know Director Haley and I both were interested in earlier in the year was kind of tackling the questions of cell phones in the schools. I would love to have that conversation at some point. I don't know what the appropriate setting for it is, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
Okay. So, the, first we can, directing it to Superintendent Gall, is there any policy or something that we follow at this time?
Dr. X, sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I mean, what's the procedure that varies?
There are school-based decisions right now. And so, I would imagine that within the 400-plus things that we have, we have policy that allows us to say, "You should be focused on your schoolwork." Whether they say cellphone specifically, I'll have to get an answer back to the board.
So, right now, it's up to individual schools to figure out what they are being, you know.
The practices individual schools are figuring that out. Like, you know, we have policy that says you can't have alcohol on premise, and schools implement that practice that they can't have it. I don't know if we have a policy on cellphone usage. Right now, schools are operating that at a school-by-school decision.
Yeah, I just remember back to Jenkins Middle School, and Jenkins never allowed cell phones in classrooms. So, students had to put away their cell phones in the locker before they go into classroom. But that's not something that's being universally followed in all middle schools. That's, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. So, board, this is something that we can discuss as a board level, as a policy? If we need to bring this up, is there support to what Dr. Carey brought about that at some future point in time, the board at a work session discussed this? So, I just need four thumbs up that we need to bring this as a thing. Great, okay. So, we will add this as an agenda item for the board to discuss at some soon point in time in the work session. Superintendent Gall, in the meantime, if you can provide us some.
We'll provide the policy and regulation review for you all to then make the recommended, recommended changes as you see fit.
And also, maybe you can provide us the current practice.
Right.
That is.
We'll start from policy and go all the way down.
Okay, thank you. Any other request, agenda item, future agenda item request from board members? Okay, I don't see any at this point in time. Calendar review, Wednesday, January 31st is the board retreat, starting at 4:00 PM, isn't it, Ms. Olson? Yeah. And it's going to be at UCCS Downtown. Ms. Olson will provide you all the necessary information. Right now, we can have that work session for four hours if necessary, Ms. Olson? Is it, the room is being booked for? Okay. So, based on the content that the board wants to discuss, we can have availability out there from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. What I would request from the board is that if you can reach out to myself or Director Haley on what are topics that you want to see covered at that board retreat. If you would like, if you can send that in the next couple of days, we can figure out, you know, an agenda for that board retreat. It's not going to be facilitated, it's just the board members. And Superintendent Gall will also be in attendance out there for that discussion. So, the idea is to expand on the conversation that we had on December 20th, but give board members more opportunity to talk, to figure out the priorities going forth. Do we align with those four priorities that are there? Or do we want something different going forth? What is the legacy that this board wants to be known for as we start our two-year term at least before the next election? Areas that we want to put the stake in the ground and say that this is something that we would like to accomplish over the next six, six months and a year going forth. February 7th is a board work session and February 14th is a regular board meeting. With that adjournment, seeing no further business, we are going to use this without having to do motions. Seeing no further business, if there are no objections and no other topics that we need to cover, this meeting will adjourn, and we are adjourned at 10:08 PM. Thank you.